Good afternoon, councillors. Prunhanda Powb and welcome to full council today. Do you have any apologies for absence? councillor John.
councillor Penny Jones is running a few minutes late coming straight from another meeting and can I also pass on apologies from councillor Phil Murphy, please.
Okay, we're going to move on. Oh, sorry. Who did this?
councillor Maria Stephens gives her apologies.
Okay, we're going to move to, I'm sorry, reorder the agenda slightly. We're now going to move to approving the minutes of the last council meeting. Is anybody happy to propose those as a true and accurate record? councillor Eason, thank you. Do I have a second? councillor Garrick, thanks. Okay, do we have any public questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Do declarations of interest? Any declarations of interest today?
Chair, thank you. So I'm conscious we've got an item covering the Abegavenny School today and this is a conversation we've had previously that's come up in scrutiny committees. There is the possibility of the need to declare a personal and prejudicial interest if you are the governor of a school, depending on how you are nominated to it. We have taken this matter, because the law is unequal in this sense, we've taken this matter to the standards committee in the past who have granted a dispensation for anyone who has been appointed as a governor to those schools regardless of whether they are appointed as a parent governor, as a community councilor governor or as a local authority governor. So therefore, what I suggest when we get to that item is anyone who wishes to make a declaration of personal interest may do so by just following up with us afterwards. But just to make it clear, there will be no need for anyone to make a declaration of prejudicial interest in relation to the Abegavenny 319 School because of their position as a school governor. I hope that makes sense. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, in terms of my announcement, if anybody would like to see the engagements I've been to over the last few weeks, they are printed in your agenda and I won't read them out to you all. Do you have any petitions today? No. I've had a request from councillor Howarth who would like to speak after petitions.
Yes, thank you Chair and good afternoon to everyone. I'd just like to bring to your attention, Chair, today is a very important day for international women in engineering day today. As we all know, that engineering is the forefront of Great Britain or United Kingdom and I think it's very important that we as a council acknowledge that the gender set for engineering is important and that we as a council promote the gender setting for engineering and I and whoever our champion would be within gender setting would be promoting for our younger people in progressing in engineering. I, as an engineer and many others probably in the council, spent many, many years as training to be an engineer and how important it is for us to have engineers within our setting and as a council, I think it's very important that we promote the younger generations. So I'd just like to commend that it's International Day for Women in Engineering and hopefully we can progress with this in the next 10 years and make it a more balanced gender. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Howarth. I'm sure we all agree that women in the engineering profession is extremely important and something to be encouraged. Right, I'd like to move us to item, well, listed as five, which is Monmouth's Agreed Syllabus for Religion, Values and Ethics. councillor Grokot, would you care to speak?
Thank you, Chair. Members will appreciate this is the first time I've done this and I'm not sure how to face you and the mic at the same time. So this is the only time you're actually going to see my face because I'm going to need to speak into the microphone. But it is with great pleasure that I bring this report to council today. And the first thing I would like to do is to congratulate the members of Sacri who have put this new document together and we ask you to approve it as the new syllabus. Of course, I entered literally at the 23rd hour and 59th minute of the process and it would be very easy to stand here and take the credit for it, but I think I would feel the knives going into my back if I did that. So let me start by very hearty congratulations to all those members of Sacri who produced the draft syllabus for us to approve this afternoon. And of course, for those who don't know, there are three parts to the makeup of Sacri. It includes our own representatives as the local authority, but then members of different faith groups together with representatives of those who teach the subject. So they come together and I think they have produced, as I say in my forward to the document, a very fine piece of work that can form the basis for teaching religion, values and ethics for the next generation. The next point I would make, I've just referred to there, we no longer call it religious education and if you're old enough, probably even Bible studies, but it is now RVE, Religion, Values and Ethics, and so in the report you will see it referred to in that way. So as a local authority, we have a statutory duty to approve the document before it can actually be taught in schools. All schools will deliver the new RVE syllabus in their own way and this, of course, is one of the joys of the new Welsh curriculum because it will reflect the needs, the interests of learners and the individual context of the school. And I think that in terms of religion and values and ethics, that adds a great deal to the potential for the subject. RVE makes an important and distinctive contribution to the four purposes that are set out in the new curriculum and gives learners opportunities to engage and explore RVE across a range of contexts. And each LEA has a statutory duty to have this syllabus in place for September next. So we've cut it fine, but we're in there and teachers will have the summer to actually get their thinking and their lessons planned, ready for the start of the new year. So the main section of the agreed syllabus that you've seen before you in your papers adheres to the guidance from Welsh Government. It means that equity across our schools, within the county and other schools in Wales. This includes Church in Wales and Roman Catholic schools as they have all retained the core guidance from the Welsh Government and enhanced it to include their own additional elements to represent their position as a faith school. Council is now being asked to approve the information contained in the draft and if I could just add a word of clarification because there was a question asked around particular issues around teaching in one area of the syllabus around gender reassignment and sexual orientation. And by way of reassurance for this council and also for all teachers who will teach the subject, if I could just clarify that the Chief Officer for Education will contact all our head teachers and actually make it clear that those two areas of sexual orientation and gender reassignment really belong more in the sociological part of the curriculum rather than the religious education part of the curriculum. So that said, I think I'll hand it over for members to make comment and then ask for your support for the recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
I'm sorry, councillor Pavia.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Can I thank the cabinet member for introducing the RVE syllabus for approval this afternoon? And can I thank him for his warm words regarding what he said about all those who contributed and worked on this document and I completely echo what he said. Having led the Agreed Syllabus Conference that worked on this document right to the last stage as the former cabinet member, I know how difficult it is to come in at the very end of a project and try to capture the essence of the thematic discussions that had already taken place in order to try and understand why decisions were made along the project journey. There was some element of confusion about the format of the syllabus that was agreed at the conference compared to the document initially presented for publication and I think that has been ironed out now with the latest update sent today. I appreciate the time that he took to speak to me to understand the nuance around the decision taken by the Agreed Syllabus Conference and by the members and how they were voted upon. It's not to be difficult, but it's to ensure teaching practitioners understand the discrepancy between the legislation and the published statutory guidance. As our legal advisor pointed out to us during our work, the legislation has primacy and we are just ensuring that practitioners are clear about what they need to do and how they need to set about devising the RVE curriculums for their schools. He has addressed the issues contained in the Integrated Equality Impact Assessment. The assessment, I think, could have been more tightly focused on the impacts of RVE and on those protected characteristics rather than capturing some of the broader elements of the Curriculum Act, the Curriculum and Assessment Wales Act, in particular the themes that will be picked up by the relationships and sexuality education rather than RVE. So, you know, again, I think the wording that was there and the clarification that will be sent via letter to schools, I think will go a long way to swage any concerns practitioners will have in interpreting what needs to be covered in constructing the RVE curriculum in each school. So as he said, secondary schools don't have a very long time to start planning for next term and I'm sure they'd be welcoming now the opportunity to see the syllabus and allow them to start that work hopefully before the end of term. So thank you to the cabinet member and thank you, Chair, for allowing me to contribute.
councillor Brown.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, I've had the privilege of attending many Sacri meetings and, you know, I'm very grateful to the contribution from the teachers, faith community and councillors. We did spend a long time going through the agreed syllabus with a fine-tooth comb and I'm very pleased about the work that was undertaken there. And I'm also pleased to hear that the cabinet member will be writing to the schools on the clarification of the Equality Impact Assessment, which seems unfortunately to relate more to RSE than it does to Religion, Values and Ethics. And just wondered if the cabinet member would also be able to agree to review the Equality Impact Assessment in view of the need for the clarification and hope that's possible. Thank you.
councillor Grokot.
That won't be a problem, councillor.
Thank you.
Right, we're going to move to a vote now then. Councillors, can you please all ensure that your laptops and phones are on silent? Councillors, that's a clear majority, so we are going to proceed to the next item on our agenda that is carried. Now, we have Sustainable Learning Communities Programme in the Abegavenny 3 to 19 School. councillor Grokot.
Thank you again, Chair. This is a really exciting moment in my life, being able to propose this report for a brand new school and learning community that, dare I say, sits very proudly in my ward in Abegavenny. And again, we have to get used to some new words to describe the way in which this school is funded because most of us will more happily know this as a 21st century schools initiative. And now we have to get used to the new terminology. We are now referring to a Sustainable Communities for Learning Programme. So if you're slightly bemused by that, I would be more than happy for you to still call it 21st century schools just for today, but your homework is to learn the new name by the time we meet again. Chair, it was back in 2017 that as a governor at King Henry, I was first informed about the plans for a new school to Abegavenny. We've now reached a point where we have full ministerial approval. We have brought various reports to council in a previous existence. I may even have been fairly critical of some of those from time to time. But in my new role now, this really is representing a fantastic step forward for Abegavenny as a community and talking to councillors in Monmouth and Caldicott about the impact that the new schools have had within their communities, I'm sure that this will be replicated in Abegavenny. There is only one problem as I stand here at the start of this meeting this afternoon. We have to actually approve and until we do approve, we cannot go ahead. So I would ask council to approve the report that is in front of you this afternoon. It is to include the construction of a new 3 to 19 school in Abegavenny, the closure of King Henry VIII Comprehensive School and Derry View Primary School. You are asked to extend your borrowing agreement in order for this to continue and the costs and how they are delineated between ourselves and the Welsh Government are very clearly set out in the table for you in the papers. What I would like to do, rather than simply read out what the exact pounds and pence are, because talking in terms of 69 million pounds is actually something beyond my wildest dreams. I did start to count out from the days when I worked in schools and the salary I was getting, how long it would take me to get to 69 million pounds. And then I got to several thousands of years, I gave up. But it's a huge amount of money and obviously it represents a huge investment, the biggest investment in Abegavenny since the building of Neville Hall Hospital. But what I'd like to concentrate on, just to bring everybody fully up to date, are some of the updates that have gone on since we last came to bring the report to you. So perhaps I could start because there is a request for an additional half a million pounds for what you might call roadworks. This is the process by which we can get children safely to school, walking or cycling or indeed where strictly necessary, I hope, by vehicle. Active travel routes will run across the site and they were, all the active travel routes will be three metres wide, well lit and covered by CCTV. That will include a route along Penny Pound, which those of us who live in Abegavenny will know is a narrow lane with a very inadequate footpath and a lot of residents have raised very serious concerns about the safety of youngsters. So we've addressed that and a three metre cycle and walkway will be built along Penny Pound to connect with a safe route that will then go through to the school buildings. We will, of course, also do our best to educate youngsters and their parents about the benefits of walking and cycling to school. The comprehensive travel plan was included within the planning application and if I could thank colleagues here this afternoon who are on the planning committee for their unanimous approval of the scheme as a whole. If I could just talk a little bit about highways because, again, this remains a source of some controversy within the local community especially. But if I could reassure that on completion of the build, all parents, visitors, community people, leisure centre users, deliveries and so on, will enter and leave via Old Heryford Road, which is the main road from which you enter the site now. Home to school transport and staff will park via the Penny Pound entrance and there will be no through route. Those of us who know the site realise the difficulty of having through cars right through the site all through the day. So there will be a tremendous improvement in safety there. There will be less traffic on Penny Pound because at the moment, every single vehicle that enters the site via Old Heryford Road leaves via Penny Pound. So it will make Penny Pound safer, it will make the children safer as they walk and cycle to schools. If I could say a bit about consultation because this has been another area where there has been some conflict in the process so far. And it is clear to me that there have been extensive consultations and indeed, both as a county and a town councillor, I have been invited to take full part in those consultations myself. So officers and members, and I would like to thank my predecessor councillor Paul Pavia for actually attending those sessions and at times really entering the lion's den because there was, some of them weren't easy, Paul, and I do appreciate the fact that you were there. But there have in total been five face-to-face events, 600 letters and six online events. More than 60 hours of consultation have been undertaken with pupils and staff and spaces within the new school have been designed in conjunction with specialist staff within the school. So we have listened to the professionals in terms of our plans for what the teaching will actually be looking like. It has also been claimed that there will be a loss of sports facilities within the school. And let me reassure members that all sporting and recreational facilities will be enhanced by this project. There will clearly be some reduction in playing facilities during the period of the building of the new school, but that will be recompensed because there is an additional field area that currently is used by Monlife, which locally is called the Lower Meadow. And that will be available for use for physical education lessons throughout the period of the build to minimise the loss of space on the actual school site. Looking forward, because we see this new school as part of a development of community facilities, we will be entering into agreements with local sports clubs like Abegavenny Cricket Club who have fantastic facilities. Back in the days when I could run more than about three feet, I used to play cricket on their square myself and it's fantastic. So that will be a great opportunity, much better than the strip of carpet that currently lies on a bit of cracked tarmac down the middle of the playing field that constitutes the current cricket pitch. Safeguarding is another area that has raised some concern and again, I would like to reassure members that this has been addressed in a very positive way. Safeguarding is at the core of everything that we as a council do and it would be remiss of us as a council to think about accepting a design of a building that does not keep everybody safe. The youngest pupils will be kept away from older pupils. They will be in a separate building on the site and that's an important point that many people who've expressed some opposition have not appreciated. The buildings are split and pupils will be separate. And interestingly, research and our own evidence from going to look at other 3 to 19 schools demonstrates that the presence of younger children actually moderates the behaviour of the older ones. And it's a common theme and a positive aspect that is often commented on in other 3 to 19 schools. And I myself, in my days in education, have often seen six formers working with young primary age children, helping them to read. And because it's another pupil from the school undertaking that, the youngsters feel it's much more positive than, in a sense, a TA or somebody like that doing that reading support. So I'm really quite excited by that. One of the urban myths that has developed around Abegavenny is that all the corridors will just be one-way. Again, let me reassure members that is simply not the case. I can't say it any more clearly than that. There is no one-way system around the school. The corridors are two metres wide, so will easily accommodate two-way traffic. The school, however, is designed so that should there ever be another pandemic and it becomes once again necessary to introduce one-way systems, the design could accommodate that without any chaos ensuing. The breakout and collaborative areas that will be a real feature of this building are positioned in the centre of each, so they'll be accessible to the whole range of curriculum activities. And the design of the corridors enables staff to undertake passive supervision. That's a lovely way of putting, isn't it? I remember the days when one elderly member of staff would stand at the end of a very long corridor and bawl down the length of it about your behaviour if you were 500 yards away. I much prefer the idea of passive supervision. The building itself will be made of high-quality fabric that will enable this to be the first carbon-neutral 3 to 19 school in Wales. There will not be one major entrance, there will be a lot of smaller entrances and again, this has come about because of consultations and particularly the pupils saying that they now have enjoyed that very much, having got used to it during the pandemic. So I think those have addressed the major areas where there has been some argument and disagreement, Chair. So all I need to do now is ask members to consider the recommendations and to vote for this really very exciting step in the Abegavenny and area education of young people and the whole community. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Grokot. Now, we've got quite a few of you who are interested in speaking, so I'm going to take them in the order in which you indicated. councillor Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. I too am thrilled to bits with this result because it seems many years now since this started 21st century schools and I had an awful feeling it was going to be a long time till we actually got them all built and I was just hoping I'd still be alive when King Henry VIII's new school was built. I'm not a governor now, having been in the past. It's going to be a wonderful school and one of the things that I have thought about quite a lot, having had several children of my own, stepchildren, grandchildren, whatever, there's always been a difficult space when they go from primary school to senior school. It's such a big leap from that little school into the senior school. With them having the building and the playing area right up against the big school... With them having the building and the playing area right up against the big school and seeing the older pupils there, it's going to make that transition so much easier. And I've noticed it, if you think back when we built Llanfoe School, they had the nursery school built in the same way, so that they were right joining really. And that makes life so easy for them, so much easier for them, if they're seeing the pupils they're going to join and seeing how it goes on. But I think it's a wonderful addition, and people have worried about all the extra transport because of the two schools being together. But when you think about it, there are a thousand pupils in King Henry now, and they seem to manage all right. So it's not going to be terribly difficult to get it managed. And I'm very pleased that they're stopping the travelling through the school. Because I haven't been lately because of the Covid, but I used to go swimming regularly. And the number, as I was coming out, they were all coming, and they used to drive, I used to think if they wanted to, they'd drive up into the actual school, up the steps. They'd be dropping them off in the door and driving straight on through. And it's bound to be causing a lot of extra traffic in certain places. So I'm really, really thrilled to bits of this, and I would second the motion completely, because we've wanted it for a long time. And it's our youngsters, they're the future. We've had our time, and we've got to build something really good for the young people of Abegavenny, so they can go on and be a success in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Powell. Councillor Bryn.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I ask, with the increased number of pupils attending the new school, can we have assurances that a robust active travel initiatives be developed and targets set from planning stage, promoting active and sustainable travel options with all current and future pupils and staff, to ensure that car related school trips and the associated school run congestion does not result in a rise in poor air quality and traffic misery in the local area once the new school is built?
Thank you, councillor Bryn. Councillor Pavia.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And can I thank the cabinet member again for his warm words? You know, as the former cabinet member, I was really pleased to have the ability to take the project to planning application stage. And I was really pleased to see it pass that milestone earlier this month. It was a Conservative administration that set this council on the pathway to renewing its secondary school estate back in 2012 under the leadership of Peter Fox. And I think whilst the initial overarching strategy of having our schools completed in two tranches, so called the Coldcot-Monmouth and then Abegavenny and Chepstow, didn't quite work out because of the financial consequences to the council. And I have to say, I'm pleased the councillor John had to make that decision in relation to Chepstow and not myself. We believe that a priority focus on on education capital investment was the right thing to do and to proceed with Abegavenny on its own, not just for the learners and families of the King Henry cluster, but for also those families wanting to access Welsh medium provision in the future, who would be constrained by the capacity issues that exist currently at a Scolavenny. Now, as the cabinet member said, the project envelope has increased markedly, and consequently so has our share of the capital cost. I don't think there's any getting away from that because of the issues of the last couple of years. You know, this is due, these costs increases not just due to the changes in form and function that were developed following consultation, but also due to the constraints of working within the site footprint, which is obviously well detailed in the report, and coupled most recently by the inflationary costs of commodities and materials. But despite this increase, I still believe the investment is the right thing to do. However, while the, obviously while the cabinet would have had these discussions behind closed doors, it would be remiss of me not to direct a question to the chief officer of resources and acting 151 officer Peter Davis, which would be, you know, what are the potential bear traps that officers have seen that could destabilise financially if we take this borrowing commitment on? You know, for my time on the project board, you know, I could see the cost control function from our commission providers was demonstrably robust, but that obviously needs to be carried through with effective cost management. However, with the do not exceed figure in place, do you have enough comfort to assure a council that this borrowing is affordable and can be managed? And finally, Chair, I think a point not just to the new administration, but to all members, to new members and old members. And it was probably one of the first things the chief officer said to me when we first had our meeting greet session five years ago. And he said, you will have to make choices. Some of these will be easy and others will be more difficult, but you need to consider and weigh up the consequences of those choices, because you will simply not be able to do everything that you want to do. So if this council does decide this afternoon to earmark a significant amount of capital resource to build this all through school, then that will mean less for other capital works, for highways upgrades, for key, other key infrastructure upgrades like our road bridges. So, you know, I'd say to colleagues, please be mindful of that in terms of what you ask for in the future, and please be mindful of that fact when you have those discussions with your ward residents in the future. Decisions like these are hard, and being a councillor is hard. However, for me, the decision to back this project financially is worth the end outcome, both for our learners and for our communities in and around Abegavenny. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Pavia. Councillors, please don't make me say this again, because it does make me sound like your class teacher, but can you please put your phones on silent? Thank you, or I will take them away. Yes, yes, thanks. Okay, councillor Neil.
Thank you. And supporting this report, I'd like to congratulate the new administration and councillor Grokot as cabinet member in taking this key report to the first possible council for approval. It was essential that you did, and I'm greatly welcome that you've done so. This report is a plan for the life chances of children and young people in Abegavenny and the surrounding area, but it's of course so much more than that. It's a £70 million investment in their lives and their futures, and a £70 million investment in the future of Abegavenny and Monmashur, the town and the county. When businesses look at places to locate to, the first two external things that decision makers look at are housing and schools. This will be a fantastic school and a wonderful advertisement for the area to businesses, small and large, and we need to let them know about it. New schools, especially one that will be the first net carbon zero school in Wales, are also a big attraction to the very best staff, teachers, management. And I've no doubt at all, we shall see many of the very best in the country looking to come to Abegavenny. If I may make one or two suggestions constructively, as the council hopefully moves this report forward, this is such a big, important project, it needs to be celebrated. I'm conscious of the front page of the Chronicle this week is simply talking about the cost. And we need to engage with residents of all ages, from the young people who will go there, to the council taxpayers who will partly fund this, to all taxpayers who will actually fund the other part of it. Perhaps, for example, a pop up site in town, various phases of completion would be a good way of engaging people, showing visuals and information. Perhaps in the marketplace, there would be a permanent site that could be updating people, but I think engaging the whole community will be extremely important. Perhaps to a competition could be developed in due course, to create a permanent artwork, sculpture or the like to be located outside the school or in front of the school. This might be for outgoing GCSE and A level art students currently at King Henry, but the idea of having that continuity could be very interesting. Councillor Pavia referred to this, but project management will be key to completing this school on time and on budget. And perhaps the council could be updated as we move through the phases. There isn't too much detail about timing in the report itself, and I would certainly recommend that for residents who may be interested to read the report, that there is more information about the timing built into information for residents. Finally, I note very positively the inclusion of active travel to encourage and support cycling and walking to and from school, with new cycleways east and west, and as you've mentioned councillor Grokot, and Penny Pound. Perhaps this aim could extend to the ambition, and I say this from having been involved in building other educational buildings, establishments, to change behaviours and to massively minimise school car runs by extending safe cycling ways through to drop off site on the edge of town where bicycle cages or racks could be installed for pupils and teachers to leave their bikes at the end of the school day, ready for the start of the new day. Such a drop off and cycle site would greatly reduce traffic, pollution, parental stress, as well as encourage good health and fitness. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Neil. Councillor John.
Thank you very much. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Can I start by thanking councillor Grokot for the report? Today, I think, is a really momentous day for this council, and I don't think Monmashur County Council has ever spent £70 million on a single project. So you're burning through the budget pretty quickly. I mean, we're really proud to have played a significant role in it, to have brought the project this far, and we've tried to do so, myself when I was the cabinet member for education, councillor Pavia when he was, we tried to be as inclusive as possible. And I'd really like to put on record my thanks to councillor Roger Harris, who was a really key member of the 21st Century Schools Project Board over the last five years, well, beyond the last, he was the member before that as well. And we were really grateful for his contribution. So I think it's really appropriate that today we take one of the most serious decisions we have ever taken as a council. In the next hour, we're going to decide whether we're going to spend £70 million on a new school. As when I was cabinet member for education, I had the real privilege to open both Monmouth and Coldercot Secondary Schools. And as councillor Pavia was saying, that was another milestone on the journey that began in 2012, when this council decided that we wanted to renew all our secondary school estate, so that every young person had the chance to learn in a state of the art school environment. And of course, these schools are not just for the pupils that go there, they're for the whole community as well. And I'm really pleased to see in the report the evidence of the community assets that are there. It's not just a school that's going to be used from nine till 3.30, but there will be facilities there for the wider community. Councillor Pavia was absolutely right about consequences, and, you know, every decision you make, it means there are decisions you can't make. And we are going to have to front up to the public that we have made a decision to invest £70 million in the life chances of young people. That means we're not going to have as much money to put into roads or other capital priorities. But I really don't think there's anything more important that we could spend £70 million on than the life chances of young people. And, you know, Abegavenny, King Henry and the other schools in the project, they educate such a large proportion of the young people in our county. It really is critical. I also want to put on record my group's thanks to the officers who've been working on this project, particularly Cath Saunders, Tim Bird, Will McLean, Poppy Harris and the team. I'd also like to put on record our thanks to Elspeth Lewis, who has shown outstanding leadership in King Henry over the last few years. And I'll always remember when I was first appointed as the cabinet member for education, and she virtually hunted me down, right, I've got to talk to you about our school. And one of the first things she did was take me around the school. And, you know, it is a building that is at the end of its life, and we can't have pupils going to school in that sort of environment. It's really important that we take this decision today to upgrade it. Particularly pleased with the proposals for the special needs resource base to be included. Really proud that this is going to be the first net zero all through school in the country. Really important that we, and I know that came through in the consultation as well, how the children and young people themselves felt that the environmental credentials of this school was really important. Also particularly proud that included in this project is going to be the new home for us Scolavenny. The school has been nearing the limits of its capacity for some time, so enabling more families in North East Monmashur to have the choice between English and Welsh medium education is really important. It was a real privilege for us to lead the project this far, and we look forward to working with the administration as it continues. There have been a couple of detractors, a couple of people who have criticised the project as it's gone along. I note there was, I want to ask the cabinet member to respond to a couple of those concerns. I've got some concerns here that were raised by one Abegavenny resident, one Martin Grokot, who felt that the overall design of the school was unimaginative and uninspiring, that the design of the entrances were inadequate and unwelcoming. Hopefully, he'll be reassured by the cabinet member's comments about sporting facilities. So I wanted to ask the cabinet member, in all seriousness, how do you respond to those concerns? I appreciate were raised more broadly by Abegavenny Town Council some months ago. I mean, surely you're not bringing a proposal to this council to spend £70 million on something that you think is in some way flawed? So looking for reassurance on that. And in terms of the design more generally, I wanted to ask about the external materials of the school. The two secondary schools we've completed so far, Monmouth and Coldercot, have been, have had a brick, have been externally had a brick frontage. The proposals are that this new school has some aluminium cladding. Are you confident that that is the most sustainable and long lasting option we could have? Obviously, we want this to be an iconic landmark facility and building, not just for 10, 20 years, but 50, 60, 70. Have we got confidence that that building is going to stay in top condition for as long as possible? I also wanted to ask about lessons learnt about safety barriers. It's something we've discussed here before, with particular reference to the experience in Coldercot School. Are there lessons that he feels are to be learnt there? And have they? I'd like some reassurance on that. But generally, we're really proud of this proposal, absolutely. You know, we said very clearly at our first meeting that when we believe as an administration you're doing the right thing, we will back you 100%. And that's absolutely what we're here to do today. This school will be equipped, ready for the new curriculum. It will provide for the needs of the most vulnerable in North East Monmashur. We were also particularly interested in the evidence that an all through school can ensure greater monitoring of families who are experiencing personal challenges. The fact that the tracking that teachers can do in an all through school is far more robust. So where we do have families and children who do need particular support, they can be closely monitored and supported all the way through their school career. So we're really proud of these proposals, absolutely stand alongside you in supporting them. There is nothing more important that we can do as an authority than support the life chances of children and young people, and we're really proud to, hopefully, voting unanimously today. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, councillor John. Councillor Grokot, we've had quite a few questions and a few points raised up until this point, and I have four more councillors yet who wish to speak. Do you want to respond to this point, or do you want to wait till the end?
I'll respond to the specific points raised by the leader of the opposition there. And as he quite rightly pointed out, I have myself, and I alluded to it in my opening remarks, been critical of elements. And one of those, I think, it reflects my own history within been critical of elements and one of those, I think, it reflects my own history within schools, where I'd visit the school and expected to see a big entrance where you went in and it said, here we are, this is Abingavenny 3 to 19 School. But it's interesting that the pupils, in consultation with them, much preferred what they have got now, which is lots of entrances, where they can go in with their friends in and out nearer to where they want to be in school. And that, what's the point of talking to the youngsters about what they want in their school if you then go away and say, now, what I wanted in my school, which I last ended 50 years ago, was different. So I've listened to the voice of youngsters and am more than happy to do so and to accept their conclusions. You mentioned the aluminium cladding. I think that that is an integral part of the design that will moderate heat. It will stop the school becoming too hot and then it will stop the school cooling down too much. And if we're going to be carbon neutral, if a school gets too hot, it then has to turn on systems to cool it down, which would prevent the aim of being carbon neutral very possibly. So it is inherent within that design. Morgan Sindles, who we will appoint if the report is approved today, have got a great tradition in this now and in fact, only today, I've been told, they've been awarded another award for their buildings and it will be, I am assured by the project engineer, the best way of moderating temperature within the school, which will be such a big element if we are to achieve carbon neutral. And if I could refer also to the point that was made by my colleague about ongoing letting the community know where we were. I think you raised some really good ideas there. And the bike park, excellent, because one of the biggest things is getting down the number of vehicles that arrive at that school every day. And we had at the back of the chamber, comment about air pollution caused by vehicles unnecessarily being at that school. I know parents who will drive their children to school and they could walk it in 20 minutes. We really have got to get the message through that every vehicle that is using the school run is making it difficult to get to our, to meet the challenge of the climate emergency. And so, yes, I listen to all these points and maybe more before we conclude the debate.
Thank you, councillor Grokut. Councillor Butler. I'm sorry, councillor Butler. Next, we have councillor Brocklesby. My apologies.
This is a very important day for Monmouthshire County Council. It's also a very exciting day for Monmouthshire County Council, that we're getting to a point where we can start building, as councillor Grokut says, the biggest investment since Neville Hall in Abingavenny, but one of the biggest investments ever in the county of Monmouthshire. And we're doing it for the future generations. We're doing it to make the best possible start in life for our young people from the age of four upwards. And that, I find that thrilling, that we're willing to invest this money. And I think a lot of thanks are due, a lot of thanks are due to the previous administration for nursing it through to this stage. Thank you. A huge thanks are to the team led by Will McLean for taking this forward to this stage, where we have more or less, across Abingavenny and the county, agreement and there will always be disagreements and I think that's one of the most important parts of living in a democracy and having the vibrant civil society that we have, that we can have these debates and that we should continue to have these debates and a school which is community focused should be fostering that. And that's the way that it looks, it will go. I was very pleased to see that in the report. I'd also like to thank the Welsh Government, because actually, without their huge investment, we would not be able to take this third, if I'm right, 21st Century School through to a point where it will absolutely be a positive impact, not just on children, but the whole of Abingavenny in different ways. Let's remember how many jobs will be tied up in that. Let's remember how many families that will benefit from additional needs specialist support there. Let's remember the rolling out of free school meals and how that will affect procurement and the way that we localise, how we support not just the academic and cerebral wellbeing of our children, but the physical wellbeing. And that's what's exciting about this school, it can do that and it can bring in the community in a variety of ways. And for that, I offer profound thanks to the Welsh Government for having such far sighted policies, that they have linked to the Wellbeing and Future Generations Act, which is at the core, it was a core policy of how this school was designed. And it's one that we, and again, I thank the previous administration for taking that policy and making it core to the last corporate plan. Thank you very much, because it means that we are in consensus around this. Councillor Neil, you are so right with the many suggestions you made about how we can encourage and foster that debate and engagement across the whole town. And let's remember for the new school, however the name is changed, that term, chosen rather, that it's not just the town, there's schools in Gilwyrn, there's schools at Cross, I'll get there.
Cross Ash.
Cross Ash, thank you. But there's nine schools that feed in that, from around our villages as well as in the towns, that all have a big investment and all will want to be engaged and a lot of work has been done already on the children and the teachers. And we can continue to do that by bringing in the villages and bringing in the citizens in the town. So by the time that school opens, we don't even have to say the name, we can say our school. Finally, I would like to thank, and I should declare an interest here, and I forgot to declare at the beginning, I am a governor of Derry View School, the school that will merge. So I'd like to thank the head teacher there, Tim Kane, who's done so much to support the children, get used to the, because it's a bigger move for the primary school children than it is for any other part of the school. It's also a bigger move for the primary school teachers than any part of the school. But they are really investing in helping children, parents and teachers see how exciting this can be and what a way to flourish as young children, when you have a forest school surrounding you, when you, it's just connected in nature in the way that is designed, is seen as really lovely by the children. And many of them, I know as a governor, are excited to see that. So, thank you. I will leave the technical details to my good friend and colleague councillor Grokut. I just wanted to extend extenuations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brocklesby. And now, sorry, now councillor Butler.
Thank you, chairman. That's not the way to start your maiden speech, is it, really? As a new councillor, I actually really do feel privileged to be here today for this important decision. You know, having been here now with, what is it, five, six weeks since we were elected. In that time, I've read a huge amount of information about the new school. I've also been privileged to be on the planning committee, so through the planning stage. And I was also very privileged to visit the school and meet with the senior management team. As a teacher myself, having worked in people referral and with young people with additional learning needs, one of the things I was very pleased to note in the reading that I did was about the wellbeing centre, which will provide behaviour support provision delivered by the people referral unit. This is the sort of integrated provision that will help maintain that important relationship between disaffected young people with challenging behaviours and with those in the mainstream learning environment. I believe that this new school will be uniquely exclusive and I do hope that today that we're able to all agree to pass this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Butler. Councillor Callard.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks councillor Grokut for bringing this to us today. As somebody who went to King Henry 20 years ago, I guess, and who's someone whose children are due to go there in the next five years, I'm personally hugely excited to get the new school. I felt 20 years ago, like the school was showing its age even then. So, you know, I noted when we went on a visit there recently with the planning committee that it had deteriorated somewhat since I was there, so it's much needed and I'm really excited that this council can take this forwards. I'd also like to add that a particular concern of some local residents was the linking the school with active travel down to Abingavenny and to note that there's some money set aside in the budget to take that forward down pound to pound. I think that's hugely welcome and I think it will allay a lot of fears in terms of integrating the school with the rest of the town. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor Callard. I'm sorry, councillor Brocklesby, Paul, councillor Griffiths, I have you to speak next.
Yeah.
Yeah, councillor Brocklesby, you're going to turn your microphone off. Thank you.
Today's clearly a day for celebration for the whole council and for the people of Abingavenny and I certainly listened closely to the contribution of councillor Neil, that that celebration needs to be sustained with an engagement exercise with the community of Abingavenny as this project unfolds. There have been many references to the phrase that 70 million has been allocated by the council to this project and a suggestion that perhaps there's a 70 million opportunity cost of things that we cannot do. In my own mind, I'd like to qualify some of those figures. We're clearly indebted for over 40 million of the contribution from the Welsh Government. So the Welsh Government, which initiated and has sustained the 21st Century Schools programme now for well over a decade, I think deserves its part of the credit and its part of the celebration of this school. The significance of the fact that the opportunity cost may not be the full 70 million, but 20 million, is that I can look forward to the missing part of the secondary school jigsaw in Monmouthshire being developed and that missing part, of course, is a new school in Chepstow. We can look forward to that too.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Councillor Thomas.
Yeah, thank you, Diocledade, thank you, Chair. I won't go over everything that's been said, but I would certainly commend this project. Ben went to the school, I taught there for 12 years, back in the 80s and 90s and certainly the building then was past its sell by in terms of teaching and learning, it's declined further and pedagogy and teaching styles have moved on. IT has come much more into the curriculum and I just think it's such a brilliant development. I would reassure people who were concerned about traffic issues, and my colleague here, councillor Grokut, has talked about it, but when I went there many years ago, we had 1,820 pupils on site with 120 staff and that obviously generated quite a bit of traffic. So I think some of those concerns, I'm sure, will be addressed. I do think as well, parents need to come with us in terms of active travel. You really don't need a four wheel drive to get into King Henry, I can assure you of that. Most children are incapable of walking, it's good for them, they catch up with all the gossip on the way and it's good for their health, their mental health and everything else. But lots of parents, particularly ones who live close to the school, want to take them in the car. I made my son, who attended the school there back in the 90s, he walked almost every day. And in terms of some of the concerns about this monumental investment, it is a huge investment, 70 million, but I would go back to John Stuart Mill and the concept of utilitarianism, that you give the greatest pleasure or the best benefit to most people. And in terms of developing a school and with the least pain, and now Kane has obviously gone, but in terms of what the benefits from that school are going to be enormous for the children, for the community, we will have people going through there who will become teachers, doctors, scientists, et cetera. And therefore, I think we really need to make that commitment. It is huge, but it certainly will be worthwhile. It will also benefit Welsh medium education, as has been mentioned, in terms of Ascoll Gommerig of Enny moving down to the Derry View site, so that really, it's a win win. So I commend everybody who's been involved with this and I certainly haven't criticised this project at any time. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Thomas. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I have a specific question for the cabinet member in respect of the Equality's Impact Assessment, if I may, and I refer in particular to the socio economic aspect of the assessment. Under the assessment, it talks about the 3 to 19 model should allow greater impact on those children in receipt of free school meals, because it should allow early identification, targeted intervention, et cetera. So, two points really. First of all, that was identified as one of the potential benefits in 2017. First of all, presumably, we've made significant progress on that since 2017. And secondly, that we are not reliant on a 3 to 19 school to provide benefits to pupils in respect of those in receipt of free school meals and their relative outcomes. And I wonder then, how does this sit with the majority of our schools, which are not and are unlikely to become, through 3 to 19 schools? And so I'd like, I'd like to hear some reassurance really firstly, in respect of that should. And secondly, I wonder why the socio economic duty assessment doesn't go any further and then finally, whether the cabinet member is content with this assessment. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor Grokut, I've got two more councillors currently waiting to speak, so I'm going to take them and then come back to you. Okay, councillor Eason.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't going to say a lot on this, but I do support the development of the school in Abingavenny. But I think we should look at the applaud in the investment the Welsh Government have put into education in Monmouthshire. In my area, we have a brand new school in Caldercot, 30 millionish, with 30 million from the government, brand new Dusso School, a lot of developers on Ascoll Gommerig of Enny and also we're developing some of the other schools in the area. So I believe that an applause should be given to the Welsh Government for the support they've given us and it's going to continue. But I've really come to the question that councillor John raised about the panels on the school. I raised this in the planning committee and I'm after reading, I'm off between glasses and a catrac, sorry. I raised a question in planning, I was given an assurance in writing from Cath Saunders, the programme manager, I won't go through it all, but she addressed the fact that I asked what the fire resistance was of these panels and she assured me that with some acronyms, that loss prevention certification board, certification, insurance back, et cetera, with the panels being whatever grade classified. This means unlike recent unfortunate events in case of fire, these panels will not need to flash over, produce little or no smoke and will not produce flaming droplets. So the thoughts have gone into this particular job and to assure councillor John that it should last 60 odd years. But just to conclude, yes, I think the Welsh Government have put well over £100 million in Monmouthshire and by the time we come to councillor Griffiths in Chepstow, we'll have gold plated panels. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Eason. Councillor Watts.
Yes, thank you, Chair, for letting me chip in. I haven't really got much to say, unfortunately, Paul stole most of my thunder when it comes to Chepstow. It is a remarkable investment in the people and the families of Abingavenny, excuse me, for many, many families. It's equivalent really, from an educational perspective, I mean, £47 million from Welsh Government is a colossal amount of money for them to invest in. In many ways, it's like winning a lottery, Chair. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that councillor Watts. Councillor Griffiths, I have your hand up again, but you, I think, thank you. It was an accident, I thought so. Okay councillor Grokot, would you care to respond councillor Taylor and other questions raised?
Yes. If I could reply to the very thoughtful points raised by councillor Taylor because I think you're quite right that part of the central thinking around the whole project of bringing in a primary school and combining it with a secondary school wasn't done just purely by chance. One of the issues that has been quite clear for those I was connected with King Henry in recent years has been that many of the pupils who have come to the school from Derry View have found that the change to the secondary school style has been very, very difficult indeed for them. In fact, in recent years, it has been necessary in year seven to set up what you could almost call nurture groups that maintained the primary model through inter-secondary education in order to enable those youngsters to cope with the new environment in which they found themselves. And that speaks a lot about the community that Derry View serves and indeed that I am proud to serve as their county councillor. Derry View currently has forty five percent of its children claiming free school meals. That number is growing rapidly. It's a community that has an advice centre which is noting day on day the increase in its services and the requests for help from its local community. I was asked when I first was offered the post of cabinet member for education what I would hope to have achieved in five years' time. And it didn't take a great deal of thought for me to say that we could move to a situation where every child can fulfil their potential. We've got a situation now where without anybody being at fault, children are not fulfilling their potential because there is that huge dip in performance at transition at the end of year six and they need to pick that up again. So what we are now creating is an all-through school where children and their siblings will be known to teachers, where the needs of families as well as the needs of an individual pupil can be known by the pastoral staff of the school, where children will get to know the staff because they will see them around the site right through their school careers. And last but not least, I would add that teachers can train together to best learn how to meet the needs of these pupils. So yes, it is not by pure chance that Derry View was picked to partner the comprehensive school, which in itself is now, I think, almost the perfect comprehensive school where vocational and academic sit with equality side by side, where individual performance is monitored closely. And reference has already been made during this debate to the achievements under the current head at King Henry, who has really transformed the outcomes from that school and shown what can be done for community-based education in our county. And it will be such a fantastic opportunity for youngsters to spend their whole school careers in a challenging environment like that where they don't suffer that gap and dip in the transition between the two phases. So yes, I stand by that equality judgment. I would perhaps strengthen it and say that yes, I am convinced that the needs of those primary aged children on site will be met far more effectively than it has been possible to do in the past. And as someone who has spent many years of my professional life working with disadvantaged, vulnerable and challenged young people, I see the huge potential to help those kids really maximise their life chances. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. If I may, that was a very long answer from the cabinet member, but it didn't actually answer my question. Thank you.
Councillor Taylor, can you please not chip in without raising your hand? It's quite rude. Thank you councillor Grokot. Now I'm going to move us to a vote.
It says there's no internet. It says it's no connection. Yeah?
Chair, while you're coding, Chair. Chair.
Sorry.
No, sorry. Chair, while you're coding, I declare.
Councillors, thank you. As we're having some technical problems, I'm going to move us to a vote by show of hands instead. So all those in favour, please raise your hands. Okay, this very clearly carried. Thank you.
Chair, before we move on, I declare a personal interest, not belched prejudously, in two schools I mentioned in my comments. Okay?
Okay. Okay, next we have appointments to outside bodies. Vacancies thereof.
Chair, thank you councillors. So this was the report that was brought to council at the last meeting. There were a few vacancies still on the, what was it, I think nine pages worth of annex. And there was a request to bring this back in. So if you look at the appendix to the report here, you can see what were outstanding boards from the last meeting. You'll note that the majority of them have now been filled, but there are still two vacancies allocated on there. So the request is twofold. Firstly, if there are any nominations to be put forward for the bodies that have the two vacancies at the moment, C1 and C2. And then on completion of that, it will be a simple vote on block for the document as it stands. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Eason.
Yeah, thank you Chair. The pension fund, I don't think exists anymore. I was on it previously and I think the last meeting was seven years ago. I think it's been taken over by another body within Torvine.
Thank you councillor Eason. I think then we are now going to move to a vote. Councillors, that is carried. Now, before we move to the next item, something I'm going to do for future council meetings, I'm going to give everybody a short break approximately every ninety minutes. It's not ninety minutes yet, but it seems like a more, you know, logical point to pause than once we start into councillor Taylor's motion. So if we could come back for half past, ready to resume business. Thank you. Thank you.
Councillors. Councillors. Okay, councillors, welcome back. And now we're going to move to motions. The first motion I have is from councillor Taylor. Councillor Taylor, would you like to introduce your motion, please?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I think the motion is fairly straightforward. But for those of you that attended the introduction to local government finance, and I confess that I've certainly heard this discussed in particular, you know, by my Conservative colleagues over the past 10 years, where at the current time, we know that we receive around £112 million in the local government settlement. But we must raise, we raise around £70 million through council tax. And the balance of that means that we raise more through council tax than most other local authorities, placing a burden on our residents, which is probably, in relative terms, greater than that in other local authority areas. So it's important to note that Monmashia receives the lowest level of funding per capita of any local authority in Wales. So that is around £1,762 per head of population, where the average is around £2,029. And that doesn't sound like a great deal, does it, councillors? But if you work that out, and I wouldn't say that mass was my strongest suit, but even I can work out that £267 per capita equates to around £24 million. So if we were to receive the average funding, then we would receive a significant amount more, which we could do more with. The funding does not necessarily recognise the need. And we face, in a county where we have a significant proportion of our council, which is effectively rural, it does not recognise the additional costs that we face in matters such as delivering home-to-school transport, where many of our pupils live further away from their main catchment schools. The burden of delivering adult social care. I know myself, you know, the distances that carers have to travel during their day. And that is also something that, you know, if you're delivering that service in an urban, primarily urban setting, then that is potentially quite a different set of circumstances. And I would also just like to mention, councillors, that this comes on behalf of the whole of the independent group. It is something that we thought it important to bring right at the outset of this council. And, you know, we are calling for the administration to write to Welsh Government and ask the local, the Minister for Finance to review the funding formula. We understand that that will face significant opposition from other councils who are actually doing perhaps proportionately okay out of that settlement, because the way that the formula works gives advantages them. We've heard today from councillor Grokert about the significant levels of economic deprivation that exist, in particular, he referenced Abegavenny. Sorry, I don't know if there's feedback there. We know that there are pockets of deprivation in other parts of the county. And the way, we also recognise that there are significant areas of deprivation in some of the other local authorities and would not wish to suggest that we have the concentrations that exist there. But, and we, those of you that have been around a long time will know that North Abegavenny actually did feature at one point in the Welsh Government's Communities First Programme. However, when that was reviewed, that funding was removed. And so, to a certain extent, the pockets of deprivation that exist within Monmashia probably haven't received any additional sources of funding in the same way that other local authority areas have. And again, as I said, we're not suggesting that there's a concentration that exists in some other areas, but they do exist nonetheless. And therefore, in particular, we're asking to review the formula and the area of the formula, the particular part of the formula, which looks at how we deliver our services efficiently and effectively in a largely, because we aren't completely rural, but we have large rural areas in this county. And that is effectively the basis of our motion. We would hope that that would receive support across the council, because this is not, you know, this is entirely apolitical. This is simply about asking for a fairer settlement so that we may continue to provide good quality services to our residents and that we may improve on them. We also understand that this funding comes unhypothecated. And therein lies another debate, which I will not get into at this juncture. But that's the basis of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Do I have a second, councillor Chandler? I see no hands raised. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Ah, councillor Garrick.
Thank you. From my point of view, if council wishes to write to the Welsh Government with this request, then I'm quite happy for us to do so. We need to be cognisant that no formula will fully address and model the needs of individual areas, and we are talking about a community across Wales. Honestly, as someone who grew up in the valleys, I do really object to the statement that I just heard, that this motion would not be popular with other councils, as they're doing all right out of it. We don't talk about pockets of disadvantage in many of the valleys communities. We talk about disadvantagement over entire communities. And we do need to appreciate the entire environment that we're in. The Barnett formula has resulted in poor allocations to Wales over the years, year in, year out. It's been publicly criticised by many for its failure to understand the competition of the Welsh population and the additional social and healthcare pressures that that brings. And I would argue that the formula we use is better than that. Everybody here in this council understands that the economic makeup of Monmashia is diverse, with a high gap between those who are economically more comfortable and those who genuinely face poverty, though. And as the cost of living crisis continues and we face inflation, which is forecast to hit 11% this autumn, more and more of our residents will encounter issues, which we need as a council to be ready for to support them. So I think it's also worth making sure that we understand that Welsh Government reviews this formula on an annual basis. And it does indeed make changes to this formula as the data indicates, when it's appropriate. So we can, as a council, write on this, but it will be reviewed on an annual basis anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Garrick. Councillor John.
Thank you very much. Well firstly, can I thank councillor Taylor and the independent group for bringing forward this motion? It's a really important issue and something that has frustrated us for many years, because the gap between the worst and best funded councils in Wales has been getting wider every year. Even last year, when, even to our surprise, Monmashia had one of the better percentage increases, even then, the gap between the best and worst funded councils got wider. Because obviously, while we had, I think it was 11.2%, obviously 11.2% of, not very much, not very much. I'd like to thank the cabinet member for the indication that her group are likely to support this and agree to make representations to Welsh Government. And the other thing I think we need to recognise, obviously mindful we have a new administration, there are many other new administrations across Wales, and we need to be forging new alliances with those administrations, particularly those other councils that do very poorly add to the current formula. Councils like the Vale of Glamorgan, like Flintshire. We need to be working very closely with those leaders, with those administrations, because there's strength in numbers. And we can be building up a partnership, building up stronger representations within the Welsh Local Government Association to address what has been a longstanding concern. I absolutely recognise councillor Garrick's point about the distinct challenges of different parts of Wales. Earlier today, I was talking with colleagues about the levelling up fund and the distinct challenges where we have got real, while we have pockets of deprivation here in Monmashia, there are in other parts of South Wales, some really deprived communities that are in need of more support than the Monmashia does. Absolutely, we recognise that. But the gap between the best and worst funded councils has been getting so wide and has not been taking account of the additional costs of delivering services within a rural area, that we think enough is enough and it's time that we had a proper review. When you think about the services we provide, some of the cost-saving measures that some of our neighbours are taking, we can't do. We can't have one leisure centre right in the middle of the county, because it's too far away from our residents who need to access those services. We can't do as Newport has done and have one tip in the middle of the county, because we're expecting our residents to travel too far. We can't do what a number of our neighbouring valleys councils have done. We can't close our six forms and amalgamate them into one college right bang in the middle of the county, because we'd be expecting our young people to travel too far. So it's a lot more expensive to deliver those services. If you go to Newport, you will see three-form entry primary schools. You think of how rural our county is. We couldn't have a three-form entry, you know, a primary school of over 600 pupils. You would be expecting pupils to travel too far. So we have lots of single-form entry primaries, where you have one class in each year group. And that costs money, you know. I think our primary school estate is in a pretty good place. I don't think there are primary schools that we could close without a significant detrimental impact on the pupils and the families in those communities. And I really don't think that the funding formula, as it stands, recognises the additional costs associated with rurality. We've made these representations to Welsh Government on a number of occasions. And I just get the sense that Welsh Government has this attitude of Monmashia, well, it's a land of plenty. And if you want more money to spend on services in Monmashia, just stick it on the council tax. Well, just because people have high house prices and their homes are expensive doesn't mean that they have high disposable income, that they have a lot more money to spend on services and can afford high council tax. There are people in Monmashia who are struggling just as much as anyone else. So we need to recognise that challenge. And also, on the horizon, I am concerned about what Welsh Government have suggested could be their future intentions with regards to funding local authorities. The fact that we, in the near future, might be seeing the revaluation of council tax. We saw it back in 2003, and that was something that really disproportionately hit families in Monmashia, where they created a number of additional bands. They created an additional band, and there were families that went up one, two, three bands. There were far more losers than there were winners. And we really need to keep an eye on that agenda, because if they were to create some additional bands again, it would be people in Monmashia who would be losing out more than anywhere else, on top of the fact that we're already so poorly underfunded. So really welcome the response from the cabinet member. And I'd really urge the new administration to forge those links with other authorities, where we have things in common and we can work to make those representations. And if there's anything the Conservative group can do to support you in those representations, we'll be really keen to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor John. Councillor Watts.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I mean, it really is a bit rich from councillor John to suddenly suggest then that they're having this entire rethink, like an epiphany over poverty in Monmashia. He's right to mention rural poverty. That is an issue, and it's a complicated issue, but it is poverty. He's right to mention the disproportionate amount of money that people spend on rented accommodation and mortgages. But what he's not right in suggesting is that the last local, the last council, which he was in charge of, completely ignored where there was concentrations of poverty in semi-urban areas. Thornwell and Bulwark, for example, Flying Star, not a penny spent, not a penny spent on the school since it burned down. We were promised then, obviously, the 21st century school for Thornwell School. Didn't happen. That's where the Flying Star is. Bulwark shops, grim, still grim, yeah? Focused completely on a town centre. You know, it's a complete fabrication to say that they really care about poverty in Monmashia, when they completely, we've been, Dimitri and I previously were banging on for months, years even, talking about this issue. Completely ignored it. So I do think it needs an appraisal, but let's be honest about it. They didn't do a lot when they were in power. Now is an opportunity for this administration to rethink it. And I welcome that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Watts. Councillor Griffiths.
Very pleased to be supporting this motion. I think any funding formula requires review and requires regular review. In supporting this motion, as councillor Garrick pointed out, the local government funding formula in Wales is subject to annual review and will continue to be. And we should press for that continuous annual review. The nature of that review is that each year, different subjects are considered. It is not wholesale, so that there is an agreed programme, agreed between Welsh Government and WLGA as to what aspects of the formula are reviewed year in, year out. So some year it might be education, the next year, social services, it might be leisure, et cetera. In those continuous reviews, what is always tested is the impact of sparsity on the spending on that particular service. So that has consistently taken place. And in some cases, it is found that expenditure on a service...
Sorry, councillor Griffiths. Some of your colleagues are having difficulty hearing you. Could you maybe, would it be good if you sat down and so you're closer to the microphone?
Okay, so make it easier?
I think it will, yes.
Okay, the point I was making is that every year, there are reviews, service by service, and in each of those reviews, the impact of sparsity is tested. It is tested by looking at the extent to which costs and service expenditure vary in sparse areas as opposed to urban areas. And if they find that the formula is not taking account of actual spending levels in sparsely populated areas, then the formula is adjusted on that basis. It sometimes surprises people that the actual divergence between sparse and urban areas is not as great as perhaps people in Monmashia think it would be. The reason that Monmashia is the lowest in the league, there's no getting away from it, in grant per capita is not primarily because there's the assessment of spending need is lower in Monmashia. It is because our property values are higher. So the grant doesn't just reflect sparsity needs, it reflects the capacity of the local authority to raise money. And local taxation, rightly or wrongly, is a property tax, and property values are higher than Monmashia than elsewhere. And that is the explanation for why the grant from Welsh Government. You may think there is too much redistribution in the formula and taking account of property values in that way is not the right thing. But be careful what you wish for. A large part of your grant actually comes from the raising of business rates, and this is then redistributed on the same formula. It is not a widely told fact that 50% of the business rates in Wales are raised in Cardiff and then distributed throughout the rest of Wales. So by taking a sort of inward looking attitude that we should have what we raise ourselves, that there shouldn't be a redistribution, take care, because the biggest gainer from that attitude would be Cardiff. And I think that should be acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Griffiths. Councillor Fuchs?
Thank you Chair. Excuse me, my voice is rather croaky, I've got Covid. So I wanted to just respond on the points raised around poverty and inequality and we do know we've got really big pockets of poverty and inequality in Monmouthshire. This is absolutely going to be a key focus of our administration. It's the number one priority on our manifesto is around reducing poverty and inequality and tackling it. And we will work incredibly hard as an administration to do that. One of the first things we'll do is put in place much clearer targets in terms of the Poverty Action Plan and in terms of the Social Justice Strategy, which were very good starting points, but I think needed much stronger targets in place to measure our progress and make sure we are actually reducing poverty. I would also suggest that we will be very much focusing on responding to the funding that people need, rather than doing things like buying shopping centres and trading estates, because we don't think that that gives us a return on investment and helps solve poverty. I think the last thing I'd like to say on this, and we will support this motion, but the last thing I would like to say is, as councillors, we all need to work much harder to bring investment into Monmouthshire, to celebrate it and to champion it and bring investment into our town centres. And that's what we should all be doing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fuchs. I see no other hands raised, so councillor Taylor, is there anything you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you Chair. I just want to clarify, I was very clear, I said that some local authorities proportionately do better out of the funding formula. I did not suggest that that was not appropriate or right, or that there, and I made specific reference to the very significant concentrations of poverty and deprivation, which are quite clearly much wider than the local authority funding formula. These are structural issues and I have spent the past 20 years working in many of those communities and I know it well, very well. So just by way of explanation, I was not, and we have not included a review of the way that poverty is supported and funded and weighted in the formula. We have not asked about that quite clearly and very grateful to councillor Fuchs's contribution. But primarily, this is, you know, in particular around the aspects of delivering services in a county which is, you know, like Monmouthshire, quite different to some of the other counties which are around us. I just wanted to make mention of councillor Griffiths's comments and I'm very grateful that you'd be supporting this motion. But it's probably our grant rather than your grant because it's, we are collectively Monmouthshire Council. But not suggesting that there shouldn't be redistribution and that funding should go to the right places, just simply asking that that matter around delivering services in a largely rural council could be reviewed. And I am aware that there's a group that reviews that every year, but to date, it would seem that we haven't had any success in perhaps suggesting or bringing forward the challenges around delivering in this, in a rural county. So perhaps we'll have more good fortune going forward if that is indeed the topic under debate. And, you know, it's good to hear that we will be very much focusing on the needs of the county. So with that, I'm very grateful for councillor John's support and indicating that we may get cross-party support for this motion. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Taylor. I think we are ready to move to a vote. Okay, that is very clearly carried and so we will move to next business, which is councillor John's motion.
Thank you very much. Earlier this month, many of us joined our communities across Monmouthshire in celebrating Her Majesty's Platinum Jubilee and joining in celebrations in village halls, streets and communities across the county. Over 70 years, the world has seen rapid societal change, technological and scientific advancements beyond the wildest dreams of people back in the 1950s. And throughout all that time, the Queen's commitment to duty and public service has been exemplary, a role model of selflessness and devotion to the people of this country and well beyond. Her commitment to the Commonwealth as a family of nations has been inspiring. And surely there is no one else alive today who has met King George V, Mother Teresa, John F Kennedy, Winston Churchill, Charles de Gaulle, Marilyn Monroe and now Paddington Bear. She's got a rare gift of connecting with people, sometimes just using a turn of phrase that goes straight to the heart. At a really distressing and worrying time for all of us, for our communities, for the whole world really, at the start of the first lockdown in 2020, Her Majesty spoke for the nation, thanking the NHS and other key workers, thanking people for staying at home to protect the vulnerable. But she gave us hope, saying, while we may have more still to endure, better days will return. We will meet with our friends again, we will meet with our families again, we will meet again. At a time of anxiety and distress for so many, she, more than any other global leader, brought comfort and hope to so many all around the world. Following the attacks on the Twin Towers on the 11th of September 2001, she shared a message for those who had lost loved ones, saying grief is the price we pay for love. And for all of us who've lost loved ones since then, that remains such a powerful, such a powerful message and one that I think we can all recognise. It was a statement that many of us recalled when we saw the heartbreaking image of the Queen sat alone in St George's Chapel in Windsor at the funeral of her beloved husband of 73 years. It was later revealed that she had been offered an exemption from Covid regulations on the basis that this was a national event, which, there were regulations in place at the time that limited funerals to 30 mourners and compelled bubbles to be sat at least two metres apart. The Queen declined that suggested exemption and I think that was an extraordinarily brave decision for anyone to make. The system of a constitutional monarchy is envied the world over. We don't have to elect a head of state every few years with candidates criticizing each other, courting the press, chasing populism. So we haven't had to put up with the likes of President Blair, President Trump, or even President Johnson. Our monarch is above party politics and yet is in a unique position to rise above, to rise above party politics and to offer advice to prime ministers on the basis, in a way that nobody else can. Her heirs are regular visitors to Wales. In March, it was an absolute delight for us to welcome the Duke and Duchess of Cambridge to Avonlea and the welcome they received was rapturous, such is the affection from the people of Monmouthshire for the royal family. So today I want to put on record our thanks to Her Majesty the Queen for a lifetime of dedicated public service. So I would like to propose that all three group leaders send a letter to Her Majesty thanking her for all that she and her family do for our residents and put on record our congratulations and gratitude for all that she and her family do. So that's the proposal from our group today. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor John. Councillor Dimmock?
Thank you Chair. I will second our group leader and join him in congratulating Her Majesty for a committed service to the country over the last 70 years. The Platinum Jubilee celebration marking the Queen's extraordinary reign on the throne saw fantastic events organised by town and community councils and other community organisations that brought people together across our county over the last, after two very worrying years. I would just like to note a thanks to all those who contributed and joined in on the celebrations and showed appreciation to our inspirational Queen. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dimmock. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you Chair. Thank you councillor John for bringing forward this motion, very timely motion as it is, especially as the heads of government of the Commonwealth are meeting at the moment. That's not why I wanted to raise my hand to speak about this, but I did want to mention about this continuing of celebrations in that we have the Queen's Platinum Jubilee Commemorative Book for Children. I'm delighted that all primary school children will receive a copy of this book. And by the end of this academic year, the book covers the Queen's reign, it covers the Jubilee, descriptions of the Commonwealth and the four nations of the UK, information on key historical events and figures and inventions and achievements during the last 70 years. So in itself, a book of history. I understand that each school will receive sufficient books for every child on the register, plus of course additional copies. And I understand that the Department of Education in England has also ensured that families who may feel that their children have been denied the opportunity to receive such a book will be able to access it online, free of charge from September. So the point I'm making really is that I hope that Monmouthshire County Council Officers and the Education Department and the Cabinet Member for Education have been encouraging Monmouthshire primary schools. I'll declare an interest at this point, I do have two children of that age who would get a free book. So to take up this opportunity, and I'm sure that fellow councillors will agree that this is a unique and special commemorative gift for the Jubilee, which children across the country and our county will treasure for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Edwards. Councillor Taylor?
I'd like to support councillor John's motion and I think, you know, it's quite incredible that the Queen has met 14 British Prime Ministers, from Winston Churchill to Boris Johnson. It's absolutely, you know, her lifetime, as you mentioned, is, and her service is almost like a history lesson in itself. I think that it was really, really good to see the Jubilee celebrations, bringing people together, bringing communities together, bringing people together who haven't had the opportunity to be together in that way for several years and, as councillor Dimmock says, after a very, very difficult couple of years for all of us. And we won't see the like of this again in our own lifetimes. So I think it's right that we, right to thank the Queen for her quite spectacular service, which, you know, well, you know, when many of us have given service over, you know, over a number of years, it seems like a long time, but 70 years of service is quite something. So thanks for bringing it forward councillor John.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Brocklesby?
Thank you councillor John for bringing this motion forward and I'm so pleased you took up my suggestion that all three of us should write, because I think this is something that we want to come from the whole council to recognise and appreciate a life given in service and a life which has crossed so many changes since her ascension in 1952. And I would say prior to becoming Queen, she met quite a few prime ministers before that because of her age. So we're all so celebrating that longevity that the Queen has shown and her service started as a very young woman. I know because I'm a bit of a history geek, that she was giving a talk to the empire, as it was then, on Children's Hour during the war, along with Princess Margaret. So has been showing her inclusion and her willingness to meet people from all walks of life and to touch them in many different ways, that we absolutely should celebrate and send our own thanks to the Queen. And taking up councillor John's point, not only is she inclusive to people who were born here, but migrants and refugees have come. And the most important one, of course, as you pointed out, was that well-known migrant from Latin America who's contributed so much to the social fabric of Britain, Paddington Bear.
Thank you councillor Brocklesby. Councillor Powell?
Thank you Chairman. I think, I may be wrong, but I think I'm the oldest person in the room and I can think back before she came to be Queen, in the days when I was growing up, because she's the same age as my eldest brother was. And I can remember her going into the army and training and driving lorries and delivering armaments during the war as anybody else would. Now, I don't think there are many monarchs throughout the world that would have done that before, you know, when they were princess or prince, because she did and her sister was involved in nursing. And it's so wonderful to think of her doing things like that. And all through her life, she hasn't minded what she was involved in. She hasn't just sat there on a throne and governed it from Buckingham Palace. She's got, she's literally got her hands dirty helping this country. And I look back with great memories, the very first time I saw her, I was about this high and she was in the car with her parents going through Birmingham where we lived then. And it seems wonderful to see her as she is now and she's so independent. She, rather than result to a walker like I've got, she won't come to something unless she can manage with just a stick and that's her pride and that's one of the main things about her. She holds her head up high and she's looked after us in this country in such a wonderful way. I don't think there'll ever be another person like her, ever. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Powell. I don't see anybody else waiting to speak, so we shall move to a vote. Sorry councillor John.
I don't, I just want to thank everyone for their contributions. I think it's, we've had some lovely contributions there. I particularly like to thank councillor Taylor and councillor Brocklesby for their support for the motion, but really grateful for those lovely contributions this afternoon. Thank you.
Okay, so that motion is carried. We will move to our next motion. Councillor Keir?
Thank you Chair. When penning this motion, I rather frivolously penned a heading of poo sticks. My childhood memories of growing up in Asc include joyful times of playing in the river, jumping rather foolishly in hindsight now from the old railway bridge and helping fundraising efforts of Asc Cricket Club by casting from a net, following and retrieving some 2,000 plastic ducks that punters had purchased for a pound and floated down the river. My late father often reminisced about swimming in the Belle Pool by Clambadoc Church where salmon bred and him walking over the Asc. Not I might quickly add a New Testament miracle-like event, but in the winter of 1962, when the river froze over. Indeed, I met a client of mine only last week who recalled swimming lanes being marked out upstream from the river bridge and lessons being held. We never had concerns about the river then. Stretching from the Black Mountain Range in Powys to Ascmouth in Newport, the river Asc is some 77 miles long, has special area of conservation status and of course is at the very heart of Asc Town. Detailed river walks are available to tourists, it featured heavily in the judging criteria for world in bloom success in 2000- It featured heavily in the judging criteria for World in Bloom's success in 2018 that I led. And indeed, the duck race still continues nearly 40 years on, on the 1st of July. Its beauty is not lost on me, nor significant numbers of others. Its beauty is, though, at risk. Change needs to happen and happen fast. The public are demanding it, not just in Usk, but change further upstream in areas of Brecon and Llanfoyst. A A Mills, Christopher Robin, Winnie the Pooh, Tigger, Eeyore featured heavily in my childhood and my children's, as did the aforementioned poo sticks on the Usk Bridge for me as a child. But speaking to our eldest son last autumn after the birth of their first daughter and our granddaughter, he mischievously giggled at such memories, stating poo sticks now as a rather different and more sinister connotation for him, and that swimming in the Usk was a no-no. There began my quest, Chair. Members may wish to know that Usk has an unlicensed combined sea overflow, CSO, built in 1974 and run by Welsh Water Durocumry since privatisation, and which for some time, it appears, has been releasing sewage and associated materials into Usk. Local campaigner and wild swimmer Angela Jones and Save the Usk River Group chaired by my county council colleague, Nasmarion Howells, have been highlighting this. The antiquated system's in place, lack of investment and forward planning, not forgetting, of course, the resultant ecological degradation occurring, not just the Usk but also on the Y. This indeed featured on a BBC Panorama programme in April this year. What we have seen isn't pleasant. The system is only supposed to be utilised in heavy rain to stop sewage backing up into people's houses, something my family know only too well during the town flooding in 1979. Believe you me, it's worse than what you could possibly imagine having that in your house. In my capacity as chairman of the National Society and then holding no political seat of responsibility, I met our MP David Davis and MS Peter Fox to formally raise concerns being expressed locally. They've taken up such matters at the Senedd, Durocumry and Natural Resources Wales. Over the months that ensued, it transpires, however, our CSO is just the tip of the iceberg of concerns. Indeed, only yesterday I had a detailed email from a constituent regarding another water-related matter, the ecological plight of Langdeggth Reservoir. Local fisherman I've spoken to speaks passionately about the declining fish stops in the Usk. It's my opinion that those who have responsibility for water cleanliness and regulatory responsibility have been asleep at the wheel and for too long. The evidence is there on the degradation. The public have had little response to their concerns, which appear to have been lightly dismissed also for too long. Long and bland responses from Durocumry and Natural Resources Wales to complaints have come across as disrespectful. I speak, as I say, of course, about the Usk, but indeed the Y has similar issues. There is a significant and growing understanding of our environment and the responsibilities as a nation and, of course, across the world. To me, a personal view, these issues have become a political football kickabout approach. Despite what I've said, regulation, though, is key. And I cannot get away from the view that NRW have not done their job well enough, nor ultimately the Senedd. The speakers at the Save the Usk River Campaign march a few weeks ago and meetings since are voicing this. So these are not just my views. That all said, we are starting to see issues moving up the national and political agendas, influenced no doubt by such campaigners and protesting. Indeed, one may say reflected also by the election here in Monmouthshire of councillor Chandler representing the Green Party. We cannot, of course, change what's happened historically, and I'm delighted to see the Senedd is now setting up. The plight of the rivers, River Usk, was discussed only recently, the 16th of June, with the minister Julie James and Avonith Cymru's CEO Gail Davis Walsh on the back of the Senedd's Climate Change, Environment and Infrastructure Committees' report on CSOs. The Senedd's acceptance of the 10 recommendations and river quality is, and I quote, "a top priority for the Welsh Government." And there is a need to move faster on permit regulation and the effectiveness of regulation by NRW. Our MS Peter Fox raised the subject at the Senedd earlier this year after my meeting with him, and again this week, as did Laura Jones, MS, who lives in and was brought up in Usk. I don't propose, nor indeed have the allocated time now to present detailed statistics on this. However, I do note the First Minister highlighted from an independent report on the Usk funded by Durocumry that 67% of the pollution issues relate to agricultural use and run-offs versus the 1% relating to CSOs. This means difficult conversations and debate will need to be had to resolve the issues on phosphate pollution with relevant parties, including that farming community. The potential difficulty in this was highlighted in the NFU's response to the Panorama Programme, when the NFU president, John Davies, says there was a false and flawed narrative that farmed agriculture as the problem to water quality issues. The nitrate vulnerable zones, the rollout in April, aimed at controlling farm pollution from surface water or groundwater susceptible to nitrate pollution, was met by commencement of legal challenge by the NFU and stated as being heavy and disproportionate. With a farming background and living in rural Monmouthshire, the interests of farmers are of paramount importance to me. It's a difficult matter. There is no quick solution, but time is of the essence. Chair, the issues before us are not just about CSOs. Durocumry have, though, committed that 99% of the 3,200 CSOs across Wales will be monitored by July 22. And the announcement this week of a £10 million investment in Usk CSO is very welcome, to say the least. And on that particular point, I would like to thank David Davies and Peter Fox for their work behind the scenes, and for Durocumry for the opportunity to meet them and to have constructive dialogue last week. I, of course, didn't pledge in my election address to constituents to talk about poo sticks in my maiden address, but that I would act on their concerns voiced to me. So I speak today on their behalf. In following up that pledge, I have, as I've outlined, met our senior political representatives and Durocumry, and put forward this motion today that we at Monmouthshire County Council, as part of the four-level political setup, as I refer to, and as representatives of our constituents, that we move on and further forward than the motion that was agreed in March 22 in the previous administration, by formally recognising the declining plight of our rivers and commit that we as a council work maturely together on a cross-party basis for the benefit of the health of our rivers, by ensuring that Natural Resources Wales and ultimately the Welsh Government effectively uses its regulatory regime and enforces change, to effect change for the benefits of our rivers here in Monmouthshire and our future generations. We owe it to them, and on this basis, I seek councillors your full support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Keir. Do I have a second for this motion?
Yes, Chair. I'd like to second this motion. It's of great concern for residents of Monmouth. It's a very great concern for the health of our river and our wildlife, biodiversity, and for Monmouthshire as a whole. It's hugely important that we address this as soon as possible in the most effective manner we can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lucas. At councillor Easton's request, I am going to take councillor Mayby. He's a contribution ahead of his. Councillor Mayby.
Thank you, Chair. As someone who's spent most of the last 40 years working on environmental issues, it makes me really happy to start on this note. I fully endorse councillor Keir's motion and completely support his concern regarding the declining state of the Y and the Usk rivers. I support his wish to see action taken to remedy the situation. And I personally am very committed to make sure that this happens. And I really welcome the cross-party consensus on this matter, which is now emerging, I think. And I'm anxious to maintain this and to build on it. River health is definitely far too serious to be a political football. And river and water management crosses administrative and political boundaries. I have already reached out to Powys and Herefordshire councils, as well as community groups concerned with the wellbeing of our rivers, many of which hold considerable expertise and want to do all they can to ensure that effective action is taken. I've also been invited to a meeting with the MP for Hereford in the near future, and met yesterday with Welsh Water along with council staff. I'm well aware that the Environment Agency and NRW are major actors in this story, and that behind them are both the UK and the Welsh governments. I think that this clearly illustrates that it can't be treated as party political. We do have to be bigger and better than that. With regard to the motion put forward by councillor Keir, I fully support it, but I would wish to note a couple of additional points, that the ecological disaster that we're witnessing in our rivers is caused not only by sewage discharges, but also by agricultural land management practices, in particular high-intensity poultry farming, but also overly intensive cattle farming and insensitive treatment of riverbanks. Welsh Water have confirmed to us that between 60 and 70% of the pollutants in the Y and the Usk are from agriculture and around 20% from sewage, which I think follows your own comments exactly. So we must press ahead with the improvements to sewage treatment, but we do also need to deal with the more complex matters around agricultural runoff and how to minimise these in the future, as well as finding ways to clean up our rivers and making sure that these are implemented. This includes natural solutions such as wetlands and better riverbank management. I don't want to waste time and energy on blaming people. We are where we are, and it's not a good place as far as the natural environment is concerned. I don't think it's fair to blame our small and medium-scale farmers, who have learnt and inherited practices that they were asked to take on in the last century to intensify and produce more food. But we do need to change that approach now. We need to ensure that farmers are supported to do so, but to recognise that this is not optional. We are in a nature emergency, and we can't lose any more time. If there is any blame to be laid, however, it is at the feet of any commercial interests who might wish to put barriers in the way of this necessary transition. We do have to stand up to this for the sake of our country, our county and our future, and in particular for future generations. The protection of the natural environment will be a high priority for this administration, and we'll work collaboratively with the many stakeholders involved to achieve positive change. In practical terms, this really requires us to consider the catchment area of these two rivers, rather than administrative boundaries. I think this is a better basis going forward to collaborate also on flood prevention, and that's an approach that I fully intend to take. So thank you to councillor Keir for bringing this forward, and you most certainly have my support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mayby. Councillor Easton.
Thank you once again, Chair. This is quite a timely motion. But before I go on, I can't remember jumping off the railway bridge in Usk. I was brought up within a bike ride to this place here, so I know Usk quite well. I was in the school on Monmouth Road. At the last council meeting, I raised the question of our representation on some of the bodies which deal with river pollution, which is the NRW Internal Drages District Body, which covers everything from the outlet at Cardiff all the way up to the top end of Monmouth and into Powys. There's been a lack of discussion with that particular group, and I think that that is an area where this council has a direct drive to make sure that they re-engage with all the councillors in these areas, particularly in this area where it affects us on the lower and upper Y and the lower and upper Usk. Before the pandemic, the manager of the area made it quite clear that he didn't intend to meet with us anymore. Yet Steve Morgan has said in the press recently that the only reason why they haven't met is because of the pandemic. The decision not to meet with us or to consult with us and scrutinise with us was a decision they took before the pandemic. I think that the answer lies, yes, with some of your assembly members, and it will apply equally as well to the assembly member on the west of Monmouth, John Griffiths. But we need, as an authority, together with the Newport authorities and the Cardiff authorities, to re-establish these scrutiny bodies where we can scrutinise, as councillors, the actions of the way our environment is managed. And councillor Keir is quite right. I can remember swimming in Usk, in the River Usk, I think it was before you. I remember swimming in the River Usk before they put the bank there. So yes, it was good and clean, and you could swim. I don't think I liked to swim, no. But I do believe that at the last council meeting, our chief executive was going to talk to the environmental agencies and natural resources in particular to try and look to re-establish how we can scrutinise, as councillors, how we can scrutinise these particular bodies. It's not the same also Welsh Government's fault or whatever. It's the bodies who are running the show that we've got to get at, and we've got to make sure that we really scrutinise to see what they are actually doing. Yes, there are discharges into the River Usk and the River Y of sewage which shouldn't be there. But I believe a lot of the problems come from the farming practices further up these areas, where we're getting pollutants, getting into the Y, causing phosphate problems. As I say, this issue starts in the environments, works its way down, and it goes all the way down into the Severnestree. It's there. We've got pollutions everywhere. So I believe that we, as an authority, should be pressing, pressing, pressing to get our scrutiny bodies back up and running so we can deal, as councillors, in those areas directly with the people responsible for that work. And I would urge, I support this motion, but I would urge that we press the Natural Resources Wales to get back on board with us so we can deal with them and Welsh Water. I don't know what response the chief executive got when he met with the head of NRW in Wales, but I would like an answer to that, and I'd like further pressure put on that we, as councillors, in these areas, have the opportunity to really deal with the issues we've got. Councillor Crook has got problems in Meir, it's not about sewage getting in rivers, but you've got problems in Meir with NRW on runoff from the reins, because we've got a system of reins put there 2,000 years ago by the Romans. It's all part and parcel of our environment now, and it starts up in the countryside where the pollutants are allowed to get in the river, and by the time you get to the bottom, they've multiplied and multiplied. And as you say, we've got discharges into the river which shouldn't be there. So I would urge that, I support this motion, it's quite clear and quite timely. I don't know if I remember you speaking about it at the last council meeting, but I would urge our authority to get a re-engagement with particularly NRW. Because we've got the councillors ready in the north of the county, and it never really mentions the River Usk, but the River Usk is part and parcel of the system. But we need to get some motion on it. I support this motion. I'd like further engagement through the chief executive to press and press and press to answer some of your concerns. At the moment, you're talking to the MSSs and the members of parliament. Yes, fine, I've got a problem with that. But we can do it ourselves, I believe, if we've got the right tools. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Easton. Councillor Chandler.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you, councillor Keir, for putting forward this motion, which is clearly not just of great importance, but obviously of great public concern. And thank you also to councillor Mayby for her response in terms of her programme and her ambitions in her cabinet role. It clearly is an important issue in terms of the pollution of our rivers, the impact that it is having on biodiversity, but also the impact that it's having on people's health. We're not separated from our environment. What is bad for our environment is bad for our own personal health and the health of our children. And it's also bad for our economic health in terms of the impact that it's having on tourism that will be coming into this area. We've already seen that area, and the economic impacts of untreated sewage going into our rivers is very real. But while we're talking about raw sewage going into our rivers is a very emotive subject and something that we would all share in terms of that personal disgust that comes with it, and it's great for campaigning and for getting the publicity, I think it's incumbent on us, particularly with this a formal motion in front of the council, that we recognise that the issue of pollution in our rivers is complex, and it requires a joined-up approach, but a joined-up, evidence-based approach. And I really would urge the council to be looking at the evidence here. So while I'm supportive of the essence of this motion, I'd formally like to propose an amendment to strengthen it. I would like to, in that amendment, I'd like to just take out the phrase that says particularly the excessive and unlicensed raw sewage discharges into the Usk, which is one aspect of the problem, and as we've already heard in the debate, not necessarily the biggest aspect. And I'd like to replace that with the phrase "the multiple sources of phosphate and other pollutants", including those originating upstream outside of Monmouthshire. I think that will strengthen the motion, and it will enable us to have a much more evidence- evidence based approach. Just on a small matter, I would also like to change the word parties with groups because the, talking about different political parties, obviously as part of the independent group, we would like the administration to be working with all parts of the, of the council, including independents. And then thirdly, I think after relevant authorities, I do want to put in the amendment to add after that phrase, including Powys County Council and Herefordshire County Council, who were responsible for the upstream watershed of, of the, the rivers that we're concerned with. And I think by putting that in there and knowing that there is an appetite to tackle there and work with those other councils, Herefordshire Council of course, is a council that is run by Green Party administration in coalition with independents. So there is an appetite there to work, but also in Powys as well. And just emphasising, this is a time for working together, it's a time for grown up actions that is evidence based, that recognises complexity and comes up with proper solutions to this. Really, so councillor Mayby has already had sight of, of the, my amendment before she made her contribution. So I'm, hopefully we can table that amendment and we can support that and make this motion stronger and to urge the council to collaborate and to work as hard as it can to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chandler. Do I have a second for this amendment?
Can I second that amendment to the motion? Thank you, Chair.
Thanks councillor Taylor. Sorry, in your chat you will see that there is the motion as it would read if amended. Could you just familiarise yourselves with that quickly? So you will also see that there is a new separate raise your hand box if you would like to speak to the amendment rather than the main body of the motion. Would anybody like to speak to this amendment? Councillor Fuchs.
Thank you very much. I welcome the amendment to the motion and I, I definitely feel I would support it. It does strengthen the motion. River health is extremely important in my ward. The River Y runs through town ward in Monmouth and it has a huge, as, as many people have already suggested, in terms of the economy and the tourism economy in Monmouth, it's absolutely incredibly important to us, so we really do need to work together. I welcome the cross-party approach that's being, and cross-group approach if you like, that's being, being put forwards here. And I'd just like to pay tribute to Catherine councillor Mayby, sorry, who's been working really hard from the get-go to bring people together and work on this, on this serious issue of, of river pollution. One thing that I'd really like to be considered, but I know we, I, I agree, it absolutely needs to be an evidence based approach, but one thing that Herefordshire Council did in February 2022 was they declared a water protection zone for the River Y. And what, what a water protection zone does is it, is it's the primary regulatory tool identified by the UK government to tackle agricultural pollution. And what it does is it provides a legal framework for introducing bespoke local measures to reflect the needs of that specific catchment that are not being tackled by existing voluntary measures. And Herefordshire Council voted overwhelmingly to, to put in place a water protection zone. There is one already in Pool Harbour that seems to be working well. So I would urge that the groups working on this, in particular councillor Mayby does look at this, I know it's on her list in her inbox. So that's one thing I wanted to say and I'm really looking forward to working with everybody, including friends of the Lower Y group I'm a member of in Monmouth, to try and help reduce the pollution on the river. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fuchs. Councillor Easton.
Yeah, thank you once again, Chair. I think this slight amendment really supports what I've been trying to say. We've already got some of these bodies in place, although not meeting. We do meet with Herefordshire County Council, we do meet with Gloucester County Council, we have had some connections with Powys County Council, but we've got the tools at our hands. I think it's up to us as councillors to push, push those tools and make sure that the support for this amendment is put in place. I'm sure that having that facility put back, we will have the scrutiny on these bodies and be able, I think, to support your view of moving forward. So I just plead with you, we, we as a council and Newport City Council and Cardiff City Council and Worcester and Gloucester already have a framework in place where we can deal with these matters, whether we solve them or not, but we've got, we've got the facilities there. We need as a council to go forward and push through, re-establishing what we've already got in place, which has been ignored, finishing up where we are at the moment. We haven't got a voice, but we need that voice being restored. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Easton. Councillor Birch.
I would like to echo what has been said. I think this is an excellent motion. I, I thank councillor Keir for bringing it and, and councillor Chandler's amendment, which I think strengthens the motion. I would like to congratulate my colleague councillor Mayby on the prompt steps that she has already taken to bring parties together to try and tackle these issues. The rivers, the health of the rivers are essential to the health of our county, both the, the public health of our residents and also our economy and our tourism. I think the, the rivers throw, flow through every ward that represented by people here from the, the Sugarloaf and the border to, to the sea. This is all of our concern and I hope that we could also show leadership to our communities to urge people to be responsible in what they put down into the sewers, put down their sinks and hopefully refrain from tarmac-ing over too much more ground, that it only makes the problem worse.
Thank you councillor Birch. Councillor Taylor.
Can I add complete, add support, you know, I support, obviously I seconded the motion, so I obviously support the, both the original motion and the amendment. But as councillor Easton says, I think it, you know, obviously we need to start somewhere and we're focusing on two of the, in particular, two of the main rivers that we have here in Monmouthshire, but I don't think the problem stops there. I think that this extends, as councillor Easton says, to the levels, for example. You know, much of the levels are a triple SI, an area of, of special scientific interest, however, without the sort of significant protections that that perhaps ought to bring. And we've experienced our own frustrations with Natural Resources Wales on that. So anything that can bring attention, bring focus, bring cross-party support to tackling these really important issues, I think as Ian said so eloquently, that affect us all, not just our environment, but affects human health significantly as well, I think is really helpful and I'm very happy to, to support that and to support any subsequent work that we may enter into as a result.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Mayby.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I just want to voice my support also for the proposed amendment from councillor Chandler and to thank him for his interventions there. And also the helpful interventions from councillor Fuchs regarding water protection zones and the potential benefits of those. And councillor Birch for raising the, the individual and neighbourhood actions. I think it's, it is multiple actions as well as multiple stakeholders, isn't it? Upstream and downstream and local level as, as well as regional and national. So thank you. I, I'm very, very happy that we do seem to be moving towards such a good consensus on this. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you councillor Mayby. Councillor Dimmock, oh sorry, councillor Howells.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to councillor Tony Keir, my fellow ward councillor as well, for bringing this motion. I fully support it and the amendment by councillor Chandler. I did consider at some point whether it would be any weight in presenting the motion together, but I clearly, clearly see from the support in, in, in here today that there's no, that's not necessary at all. Me and councillor Keir, we, we attend an action group in Usk and we had, as you referred, the, the walk we had a couple of weeks ago, and it just showed the support that we have in our community for, you know, the, the, the issues that are going on in the river. We also welcome the announcement this week from Welsh Water that they are investing, I know this is a larger issue, but in, to the Usk community, they are putting a £10 million investment into upgrading the sewage works there. And it's pleasing to see that there is, you know, such a large cross-party sort of collaboration on this. I note in the discussions at the centres this week, a member of the centre, Laura Jones, brought to attention questions to Mark Drave for the First Minister and he, you know, drew, drew attention to the sensitive issues that go much further than just the, the combined sewer overflows. I think we all have a, a responsibility for, for nature. Nature doesn't have a voice, we are that voice for it, so it's lovely to see that there is such a big support for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howells. Councillor Dimmock.
Thank you, Chair. I suppose we're very lucky to live alongside the rivers that run through Monmouthshire. Our rivers are vital for drinking water. I actually read that the Y provides fresh drinking water to just over 2.5 million people, also for people's livelihoods and for the, and for nature, but unfortunately they are still threatened. And I agree with councillor Easton, we as a local authority must commit to push for recovering freshwater biodiversity, restoring natural river flows and cleaning up polluted waters for people and nature to thrive. I'd like to thank councillor Keir for bringing this motion to council and keeping it firmly on the council agenda in the footsteps of former councillor Jane Pratt. And like councillor Miriam said, Laura Jones and Peter Fox put questions to the First Minister just this week, so there's undeniably a desire from both sides of the chamber and I'm delighted to hear from colleagues who have contributed along with the cabinet member showing support on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dimmock. Councillor Keir.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Can I thank all councillors for their positive contribution to this debate and it is wonderful to hear the rounded support in general for this whole issue. It's narrowed in this motion in relation to the rivers, but cross-party is the wider bit and I absolutely get there are far bigger issues than just rivers. I absolutely get that and I would like to add my support to councillor Chandler's amendment. I think that's sensible, I think it's good and I would like to say, if I have the opportunity of working with a cabinet member on this subject, I care passionately about my hometown and the river and, and I would very much welcome that opportunity of working with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Keir. Councillor Davies.
Thank you, Chair. May I too thank and applaud my good friend councillor Keir for bringing forward, it's a very timely and important motion, which, which I too have no hesitation in, in supporting this afternoon. As with many colleagues across this chamber, river health is a key concern of many residents across my own ward of Llanwoesfawr and Gwylann and indeed for that matter, my, my own young family who have enjoyed many an evening sat on the banks of the River Usk. And I too vividly recall that BBC panorama documentary and, and watching with, with utter horror at, at the weight of evidence presented of untreated sewage and indeed human waste being dumped into our precious rivers. And I think that panorama investigation, as with the tireless campaigning of councillor Keir and the Y and Usk Foundation in particular, and many colleagues across this chamber, brought to light, I think, that, that very alarming evidence of, of our water companies illegally dumping untreated sewage into our rivers, to the detriment, if I may say so, of Monmouthshire's celebrated natural environment. And I very much agree with the remarks of councillor Chandler, that poor water quality understandably is the result of a plethora of factors and indeed responsibility for the health and viability of our rivers crisscrosses, crisscrosses the jurisdiction of many key actors and regulators. And like colleagues in this chamber, I'm not particularly interested in point scoring or indeed pointing the finger, but that said, I do fear that by introducing a nitrate vulnerable zone across, as the Welsh Government have done, across the whole of Wales, that the Welsh Labour Government has disappointingly chosen to scapegoat our farmers rather than tackle the root cause of this issue. Under the guise of tackling river pollution, the, the Labour Government in Cardiff Bay with its nitrate vulnerable zone proposals have essentially indiscriminately penalised our farmers, placing, if I may say so, strict and costly restrictions on them, regardless of the water quality in that particular area, whilst failing to address, as I said, the root cause of, of river pollution. And I would be interested to hear whether councillor Keir agrees with me that these NVZ proposals or regulations, as they now are of course, grossly, are grossly unfair to our farmers and that in, in supporting this motion and in redoubling its efforts to engage with Welsh Government and relevant actors, that this council should also continue to press for the Welsh Government to reconsider its approach to these regulations in the fullness of time. In closing, Chair, may I, may I too applaud the cross-party nature of this debate. It's been a real pleasure to participate in a debate of such breadth and such quality of, of interventions and I very much look forward to supporting the efforts of councillor Keir and other interested colleagues in, in driving the improvements that we all so, so desperate to see with the health of our cherished rivers. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Davies. Before I take our last contribution here from councillor Brocklesby, I'm not hearing any opposition to the amendment and I think some people are actually quite keen to speak to the body of the motion rather than the amendment itself. So after councillor Brocklesby's contribution, we will move to a vote on the amendment. Councillor Brocklesby.
I would like to thank councillor Chandler for, for bringing this amendment. I think it adds depth to the motion and I'd also like to thank councillor Mayby for all the work that she's done to move the council on so substantially in a very short period of time in making sure that we work consistently and profoundly with all the stakeholders that we need to work with. It's early days, but you will know that my party pledged to look at all aspects of climate change, environmental crisis, and I would add as part of that, the crisis of nature. And this is, this is only one element that we will need to roll out over time. I also note and welcome your comments councillor Chandler, that this is the whole chamber working together, the whole council working together and that we should refer to ourselves as groups.
Thank you councillor Brocklesby. Councillors, we'll now move to a vote as to whether to adopt councillor Chandler's amendment. Councillor John.
Can I just clarify, we're, we're voting on the amendment?
Yes.
It says we're voting on the amended motion on the screen.
No, sorry, that's incorrect. We are voting on whether to adopt the amendment to the motion or not. Which, yes, which has carried. So we're now going to continue discussion on the motion as amended. Councillor Webb.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Very interesting debate. For somebody that, as the board is, goes through the, I took the opportunity to put on one of these maps of the wonderful River Y on your desks today. I hope you'll all enjoy reading it. It's amazing river and can I thank Tony Keir, councillor Keir, for his motion, which we've also fully supported and there's been some really, really interesting comments. Looking at councillor Easton's comments with regard to his frustration that things aren't moving forward as we had hoped, just that there are representations from this council on the Y. on the Y, it's called the Y Nutrient Management Board, there's three officers here working well on that, plus a member from the Forest of Dean Council and the Y Valley AONB, so that might help a bit, and I think there's so many cooks at the table with this, it interests so many people in so many different ways, farmers, users, tourists, it's a huge, huge issue, so there are probably not too many cooks at the table, but a lot of them. But it's a very interesting debate, and I thank members for it, and also the, the issue, I say rages and ranges on, we're getting nowhere at the moment, and we must really force these groups, as we've called them, these groups, to press this matter forward with regard to the, the pollution on the, on the river, and find out the causes and what we can do about it, and the, the health of our river is so important, before it's too late, we must do something about it, and I think we all agreed, everybody in the chamber has agreed that this is the way forward. Thank you so much, thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Webb. Councillor Davies, as you spoke on the amendment part of it, would you like to speak again to the main body, or have you made your contribution?
Sorry Chair, I should make myself clear, I was speaking in support of the main body of the motion, and I'm very happy to endorse the amended motion as well.
Lovely, thank you councillor Davies. Councillor Keir, if there are no other contributions?
No.
Councillor Eason, you have already spoken both to the main body of the motion and the amendment, so that's all we're going to hear from you for this one.
Just briefly, one reference.
No councillor Eason, no.
You see four?
No councillor Eason, I'm sorry, no. Any other contributions from people who have not already had their allotted speaking time? No? Okay. Councillor Keir.
Well, once again, I wanted to thank everyone's contribution and, and support the, the amendment, and I move for that amendment pleased to move forward.
Thank you councillor Keir, we shall move to a vote. Councillors, that motion is carried, and as we are now coming towards the 90 minute mark again, we're going to have another short break, ready to resume business at five past five please, promptly.
Chair, can I ask a question? Chair, I, I've got a problem really on the tech, so on the motion on three, even though I pressed my options, it won't let me submit it, it says you haven't pressed your option, when I clearly have. Is anybody else getting that problem? Or is it just me?
It was only you councillor Watts.
No, I had it as well, but it eventually went through, I just kept clicking the four, and then eventually it let me submit Armand.
Lovely.
It says did you, you didn't select any option repeatedly, so I tried it.
Councillors, councillors, whichever way you voted, it would still have carried, so it's carried regardless. We're trying to look into whatever technological problems you're having, but this motion stands, and we are going for a break. Right, councillors. Right councillors, we're now going to come to the motion from councillor Brown.
Thank you madam chairman, I will take the motion as read as stated on the agenda. Highway studies confirm the limited capacity of the High Beach roundabout Chepstow. The queues to the roundabout in all directions and the daily traffic congestion at this pinch point can be absolutely horrendous. The problem is well known by local residents, the delays impact the ability to travel freely, both for car and public transport. The Welsh Government supported the World Tag One study which has recommended 11 options One option with extra land and one without. The World Tag Two study was due to narrow the options and be consulted upon from late spring, early summer this year. However, after the election, I was informed that it has been postponed this year due to Welsh Government funding and priorities elsewhere in Wales. The local consultation on World Tag One was only with Transition Chepstow and Sustrans. Whilst I fully appreciate the work of Transition Chepstow, I ask for this to include locally-elected representatives as well. Because of all my emails on it, it was indicated that I would be consulted. However, I do feel that this consultation should include county councillors who have been democratically elected to represent their communities. The World Tag One study covered peak times only, but from the Palmerick direction, the traffic congestion can occur at unpredictable times of the day. Whilst it is pleasing that the mini services at Larkfield Garage near the roundabout are doing well, it appears to be impacting traffic congestion due to vehicles turning into these mini services against the flow of traffic and thereby blocking traffic going through down to town from the High Beach roundabout. There is a need to study this impact as well, not just at peak times but other times of the day. It has been known to take up to 30 minutes or more to go two miles into Chepstow and can be quicker to get to Coldicott from Palmerick. On occasion, it can take as long to get to Chepstow as to get to Newport Shops, which are 16 miles away. The journey from Palmerick to Chepstow should only take five or 10 minutes by car. This illustrates the fragility of the single road network in Chepstow, the overcapacity of the roundabout and the need for immediate improvements, where the simple opening of a mini services can have such an impact. I have suggested that near the Larkfield Garage, the traffic lights are moved and, if possible, a right filter goes in near these mini services on the A48 to town. Also, that the right filter at the Tesco turning is lengthened due to this blocking forward-moving traffic. These items also need funding by the Welsh Government, as the A48 into Chepstow town and the High Beach roundabout are the responsibility of Welsh Government highways as opposed to the local authority. The queues in all directions to the High Beach roundabout are impacting commuter traffic joining the motorway for work, local work journeys, school buses, local trips to the high street and leisure activities. For example, the school bus for Palmerick to the local primary school and the Chepstow High School can no longer stop on both sides of the A48, as the volume of traffic is such that it will delay the journey to and from school too much. From a doorstep conversation, I have been told by a local resident in Palmerick, Chepstow, that he no longer goes into Chepstow but heads for Coldicott due to the traffic congestion, hence showing how traffic congestion is impacting Chepstow high street trips. The natural destination of villages close to Chepstow for high street shopping should be Chepstow itself. There is an urgent need for these World Tag studies to improve High Beach roundabout to go ahead as soon as possible to improve this pinch point. It would be possible for the Welsh Government to agree to provide the finance for these studies to go ahead on an over-programming basis, I understand from the Head of Operations of Welsh Highways. I have asked the Head of Operations of Welsh Highways if it is possible to appeal the World Tag Two study financing being postponed to a consideration next year so that instead it can start this year. However, I was informed there is no appeal mechanism at all. It means that the only option is for Monshia County Council to approach the Welsh Government direct, which this motion seeks to do. I very much hope this motion will be supported across the chamber in view of the urgent need for improvements at this pinch point at the High Beach roundabout Chepstow, which needs to be studied and implemented as soon as possible. So I'm very much hoping that the chamber will support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, councillor Webb.
Thank you.
Yes, councillor Anne Webb is seconding. Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing this motion, councillor Brown. It's well needed. There were improvements to happen but never happened. Implications along the A466 towards my ward are huge in the mornings and I really welcome this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Webb. Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Brown for bringing forward this motion, which is a very passionate topic for anyone living in Chepstow and, of course, Chepstow councillors as well. Now, pulling the funding for a second stage of World Tag High Beach wouldn't make sense to anyone, anywhere, never mind in a gateway to Wales town of Chepstow that is known UK-wide for its traffic congestion and being the most air-polluted location in Wales. Yes, that's more air pollution than Cardiff, Swansea and even the smoky Port Talbot. Now, over the years, this has been contributed by a growing number of, well, an increase in residents, I suppose, and, of course, the associated traffic associated with that. And, of course, an out-of-date road network under the jurisdiction of Welsh Government that is a contributing factor to the high levels of harmful local air pollution detrimental to the wellbeing of not only residents but also the town. Now, there are two primary purposes of a World Tag study: to enable the most beneficial scheme to be identified and to allow the comparison of schemes on a like-for-like basis. Now, we know there's a major problem in Chepstow and the whole process is about identifying a suitable solution. And we're very lucky in that we have Transition Chepstow coming up with ideas, even two members, two residents, rather, in my own ward who are also highway engineers, not connected with any study in any way, but they come up with their own plans. Now, over the years, especially since my election in 2021, I've knocked on every door in my own ward and distributed, excuse me, a resident survey to every single resident. This is on top of other local campaigning in other Chepstow wards. And it's one thing that you can be guaranteed of to hear from residents is Chepstow pollution and, of course, the problems with High Beach roundabout. In fact, it was the main response on the doorstep regarding Chepstow High Beach roundabout and about 96% of residents, probably about, say, surveys completed, 700 surveys completed during my time knocking on doors. And that is why I fully support this motion, particularly since recently discovering, at the same time as councillor Brown and councillor Pavia, that the next stage of funding has been pulled by Welsh Government. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Councillor Watts, your hand went up and then down again, so if you want to speak at this point, you can.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, sorry, I don't know what's happening with my tech, I do apologise. I mean, in principle, I've got nothing against, you know, looking at High Beach roundabout. I think, you know, there are lessons to be learned from other roundabouts, you know, for example, the Caldera. That wasn't a problem until we had the response, which is now, I know we've all got used to the Caldera, but what a fantastic bit of imaginative engineering that was. So I'm not saying that we should effectively do what they did in the Caldera, but those left-hand lanes and that through-lane is just a very, very clever notion. Also, if you got to Gloucester at Long Leavens at the back, they're on the way to Cheltenham, very interesting road traffic kind of measures they've got and they really work really well. So I think that it does need some kind of improvement. The only point I'd make is, if you think that this is the silver bullet to all the traffic problems in Chepstow, and I'm not going to mention the bypass, I'm not actually Paul Smirkin because he's just going to have a lie down, is the reality is, it's the town centre. The reason why we've got traffic going on the A466 is effectively the semi-pedestrianisation of the town centre. So at certain key points of the day, the traffic can't flow as it used to through the town centre, up on Welsh Street and then onto the A466, as rightly identified. So I would urge really caution on this. If we're trying to say that the mini services, and I think it's a slight exaggeration to say that two kind of retail units and a petrol station quantify mini services, that's lowering people's kind of imagination, I think, on what service stations are. I don't think they are services. I think that that isn't sufficient, it's not solving the issue. I would urge caution about hanging everything on this. But I would be interested to look at, you know, some re-engineering of the, you know, the top of Larkfield, really, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Watts. Councillor Pavia.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And can I thank the member for bringing this motion forward? I know she's been a passionate campaigner on traffic issues in and around Chepstow for a number of years and she's certainly been a strong advocate for the residents that she represents in Matherne and Palmerick, which sort of join the High Beach roundabout to the western fringe of Chepstow. For those who don't know, Chepstow, the roundabout now falls between two wards, my ward of Mount Pleasant and Larkfield and Chepstow Castle Ward, newly-created ward. However, I think what I possess that the councillors Ruck and Griffiths do not possess is that I've got only two air quality management zones in my ward on the A48 road on Hardrock Hill and Newport Road. Certainly not an enviable label to have or to boast about. I think the residents I represent, that live on Mount Pleasant, Hardrock Hill and Newport Road, suffer from some of the worst pollution levels, not just in Wales, but probably in the UK, and have done so for decades. And while, of course, those who live in other parts of Chepstow and the surrounding villages obviously suffer the impact and inconvenience of increased traffic congestion, these residents that live on this road are the hardest hit and they deserve to have something done to alleviate their plight because of the levels of pollution that they experience every single day and it certainly will be impacting their health. And then the council's request to Welsh Government to act on High Beaches in a recent one, we've highlighted the issue as a strategic risk for some years. It was actually at Bina Hard that commissioned Parsons Brinkhoff to undertake the A48 Chepstow study back in 2014. The cumulative options appraisal that this report, when this report was published back in 2016, listed six potential options and certainly some were more palatable than others. But one of the fundamental options was the improvements to High Beach roundabout and which would mean significant remodelling to improve traffic flows, particularly to address the greatest volume of traffic which is coming up from the A48 from town and going down the A466 link road down towards New House Farm and either the Bridge or the M48. So this has been on the table since 2016. Transition Chepstow hosted a public meeting back in April 2019, again, to get policymakers and politicians around the table with the public to discuss this through. I think they added another three or four options into the mix on that night for Welsh Government officials to consider and a bit to find some consensus and obviously to kick on with the work that needed to be done. I think there was probably 400 to 500 people at that public meeting, which certainly demonstrated public concern and a desire for urgent action. But since then, we've seen very little movement from Welsh Government, other to concede that changes to High Beach will be done in two stages, short-term and long-term measures. Now, those short-term measures were completed during the pandemic and they were basically remarking of road lanes. So as you can imagine, this has done very little to ease the traffic flow, which has increased during the pandemic. And of course, as councillor Watts has alluded to, you know, the impact of the pandemic initially had consequences for local road layout. The authority closed the high street in the town to a public health guidance. However, all this is done now is just to create a one-road town and it's essentially exacerbated the traffic problems at known pinch points, including High Beach. Now, obviously, the new administration have had the results from that public consultation survey and I hope they'll be bringing forward plans to reopen that road to traffic because it does have an easing effect and there's no getting away from that, it does have an effect. Yes, there've been a number of additional studies commissioned by the authority, which Welsh Government have contributed some funding towards over the last couple of years. Active travel, in particular, Chepstow Transport Study, both of which are obviously important to aid modal shift and to make it easier for the public to access and use public transport. But, you know, as, and I agree completely with what councillor Watts has said, even with completing the remodelling works of High Beach, this isn't the silver bullet. It will still not address the fundamental problem that this area of the county suffers from, and that is it's a thoroughfare for traffic from South Gloucestershire and there's not enough road infrastructure capacity currently in the system to deal with the ever-increasing volumes of traffic. And this isn't going to change, it's only going to get worse because we've got the barracks of Beechley, which are going to be decommissioned at some point by the end of this decade, I think 2029 is the sort of end point. And there's 800 houses earmarked for that site. So you just imagine the amount of traffic that's coming on to the A48 if something isn't addressed in the medium to longer term. And that's why fundamentally, why the former administration looked at progressing plans for a bypass with partners over the border to get this matter resolved in the longer term. Now, the council is still committed to the bypass as it passed a formal motion to underline that fact. However, I understand anecdotally from local people and I know what councillor Watts knows, he's in the paper every week, so I know exactly what he thinks on this matter. But there was some indication that the new administration want to ditch these plans. Now, if that is the case, then it needs to be open and honest and transparent to this council and to the public in Chepstow that it intends to do that. It cannot simply quietly drop the policies, I'm sure some members would like to do. However, obviously, that's a debate for another day. Changes at High Beach must happen as soon as possible. The A48 is classified by Welsh Government as a strategic route in South Wales, connecting the south-west of Wales with England. And that's what makes its announcement, that move into World Tag Two this year, is not a pressing matter in its regard. You know, this, and that is the critical point, you know, we're not even at stage two. We need to get to World Tag stage four before a spade is put into the ground and that still looks like some years away. So I hope the new administration will support the motion and exert what influence it has with its colleagues in government in Cardiff Bay. We obviously have, as a deputy leader, former special advisor that worked with the current First Minister behind the scenes in Rodri Morgan's government, so I'm sure it has a lot of sway in terms of persuading the Welsh Government to change its mind on this and reverse its decision, because the people of Chepstow have already been waiting far too long. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pavia. Councillor Griffiths.
I'd like to try to stand again, if I can make this mic work. I just have this desire to see people I'm talking to. I thank councillor Brown for tabling this motion and I urge this council to support it enthusiastically and unreservedly. The case for improvement on this roundabout is very, very strong indeed. Some of you may think you don't know where it is. If you think that, you've probably spent a large part of your life looking at it, because whenever you've come into Chepstow, you have sat waiting to get past this roundabout. The congestion is very, very significant and, as councillor Brown says, its impact is not just on the frustrations of the drivers trying to go through, it is an impact on the success, the vitality of Chepstow as a town centre. Town centres are part of my Cabinet brief. My objective over this term is to do all that I can to increase the vibrancy of all our town centres. At the moment, in Chepstow, the town centre suffers because people cannot face the congestion of getting in and out of the town. People who are living on the northern fringe of Chepstow, only a mile away, are actually travelling to Newport or Cribs Causeway in order to shop because they cannot face the congestion on this roundabout. So expecting, hoping that this motion will pass, it will give our Cabinet the foundation it needs to go back to Lee Waters, the Welsh Government's Transport Minister, and say that the funding for this World Tag study is urgent. And I understand it probably costs about £100,000 to do the study. I'm always amazed by these figures. You can imagine the total cost of four studies. What I've seen, and again, I thank councillor Brown for all the work she's done as the previous Cabinet minister, she has been zealous. previous Cabinet Minister, she has been zealous in pressing the Welsh Government, and it's a rather odd feeling, I can read your past correspondence as a new Cabinet Minister, and I know the pressure that you've put on. And I know also that what's been said in the correspondence is that the Welsh Government is not saying this is, in principle, a project that they're not supporting, they've simply not given it priority in their budgeting. So no doubt there will be scores of projects somewhere throughout Wales competing for a limited pot, and this one didn't get it. The point that I would want to make to the Welsh Government Minister is that you're already facing the underspends, which you always get in highways budgets, there will be £100,000 down the back of that sofa this year, and you can find it for an urgent study on this bypass. Lee Waters is not known for his enthusiasm for road projects, I think that's generally well-known, he takes the view, and I think a lot of us can see the logic of it, if you invest in more roads, you're investing in more traffic, and as you invest in more traffic, you're further damaging the planet that we all hold dear. My argument to the minister will be, is that if you've got objectives of modal shift from roads to active travel to railways, then we share those objectives, and investing in improvements in this roundabout is a means of achieving those objectives. I have huge ambitions for the station in Chepstow, to increase the timetable, to increase rail travel from Gloucestershire through Chepstow into the rest of the railway network. One problem is we haven't got enough trains, that's associated with the fact that we have lots of trains that go through Chepstow, but the UK government forgot to include Chepstow in its franchise for the cross-country service, so the cross-country trains by and large don't stop in Chepstow. So that's something the UK government can do to level up and support Wales. We'll get the improved rail service in Chepstow, but that will be of little benefit if people cannot get to that railway station because of the congestion at High Beach roundabout. So I want to link that improvement to the railway objectives. Lee Waters is well-known for his ambitions on active travel, we share those with him. I'm an experienced cyclist, I do cycle that roundabout, I would never recommend it to an inexperienced cyclist. So unless the improvement on that roundabout is linked to the active travel routes, we're not going to get the active travel ambitions that he's got. So in writing to the Transport Minister on the back of councillor Brown's motion, and I hope the support of this council, we will rehearse the argument that his broad objectives for a modern transport system in all parts of Wales, including this one, can only happen if we make progress on this roundabout. So I urge you to support this motion.
Thank you councillor Griffiths. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you Chair. I'll be supporting this motion. I agree absolutely, wholeheartedly, that the High Beach roundabout is really problematic, but I'll be supporting it in the sense that I think there is a real issue around air pollution and air quality, but it's a short-term solution, and I'm really pleased to hear councillor Griffiths talking about the need for modal shift rather than the need for creating, you know, other routes per se, because we have to get people out of their cars, whichever way we do it. Speaking as someone who's campaigned about mega-station for the past 10 years, we are, I think, relatively close to seeing some real progress on that. But Chepstow, you know, activists from Chepstow and Chepstow Station have been coming to, came to our Strategic Transport Group for many, many years, looking for, you know, increased services, increased accessibility measures, because that's really important. But I would agree that in the short term, it's important to get High Beach improved, because it is really problematic for a number of reasons. But again, my support is about it being a short-term measure to lead us into long-term modal shift in Chepstow, and in fact, in the whole of Monmouthshire, that our commitment to that mirrors our commitment to the climate emergency that we declared some years ago before the pandemic. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Do I have anybody else wishing to speak to this motion? No, councillor Lucas no longer wishes to speak. Right, back to councillor Brown then, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, and I wanted to say, you know, thank you very much to the support across the chamber in relation to this matter. I do appreciate that this is more of a short-term measure as opposed to a long-term solution to the problems, but I think it's one of these issues that Welsh Government can actually progress on their own without having any liaison with other authorities. So it is actually an easy win from that point of view in terms of the immediate side of this. I don't know whether my fellow councillor, councillor Pavia, wants to add anything to that particular point at the moment or not, I think he's nodding, he's saying no, so yeah, I'd just like to say thank you very much. And I think even with regard to the point that's made about the modal shift, you'll find that public transport in the form of buses, they're just queuing just as long, and that's delaying all of their timetables and making them a much less, basically reliable source of transport for people, because of the fact that it still takes them just as long to get into Chepstow itself, you know, and makes them revise whether or not they actually want to take that journey or not. So thank you very much for your support, and I'm grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brown. Right, we're now going to move to a vote. So we will now move on to members' questions. Councillor Pavia, I believe, has a question for Cabinet Member councillor Grokot.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Can you take it as read on the agenda, please?
Thank you for the question, excuse me. I'm grateful to councillor Pavia for the question. It comes at an opportune time to reflect on the experiences of learners who will have just experienced the first set of formal examinations since 2019. Examinations are always challenging times, but with the added layers of the Covid experience of disrupted learning and heightened anxiety, it's pertinent and important. As members would expect, there are a myriad approaches to supporting our learners, some will be part of a common framework, some will be specific to local schools. There is also a wide range of support that's accessible from other partners, both within and outside Monmouthshire County Council itself. At the broadest level, a universal approach to emotional wellbeing and mental health is being established. All schools are working towards embedding a whole-school approach to mental health and wellbeing. This encompasses mental health support. This was a development which led initially by Kirsty Williams, following the publication of the report Mind After Matter chaired by Lyn Nigle, and has continued under her leadership as Deputy Minister, and Jeremy Miles as in his role as Minister of Education and Welsh Language. In this specific whole-school approach, King Henry VIII and Chepstow Comprehensive have taken part in Phase One of the Public Health Wales pilot, which has gone well, which are also, sorry, Caldercot and the pupil referral service will be Part Two phase starting in September. We're fortunate that one of our own team in Children and Young People Directorate is seconded to the project, providing us with immediate access to the latest thinking. Within Monmouthshire, we developed our wellbeing subgroups action plan from the Secondary School Health Research Network data. This survey addresses a number of health and wellbeing-related issues, and as such helps us to determine our areas of focus. Monmouthshire's secondary schools are represented in this group. As their needs increase, pupils can also access other broader, local authority-wide offers, such as the Educational Literacy Support Assistance or school-based counselling. These are services that offer more intense support and engagement with individuals. Furthermore, all secondary schools have a link educational psychologist that can provide support for individuals who have mental health needs, as well as training and raising awareness around specific issues. Training that has gone into schools this year includes the youth mental health first aid in schools training. Trauma-informed schools training and suicide and self-harm prevention training have also been available and accessed by some of our secondary schools. The service has also developed a training package to support learners with emotionally based school avoidance. This is of vital importance at the moment, as we see the return to school of learners post-pandemic. Other sources of support are via Monmouth's Early Help Panel, and agencies such as the Youth Service and the Child and Adolescent Mental Health Service. Beyond schools, Monmouthshire Youth Service provides the Shift Project. This offers non-clinical support to young people aged 11 to 25 in Monmouthshire who are experiencing issues which are impacting on their mental health and/or emotional wellbeing. This support is carried out one-to-one by a qualified psychologist or registered youth workers over a six-to-eight-week period, using youth work approaches and methodologies, including listening, supporting, mentoring, advocating and signposting. This one-to-one support happens in secondary schools, in the year six of primary schools, in youth centres, the community and digitally. It's an excellent example of the service meeting the user where they are. We have also extended our partnership working with third-sector services. Mind Monmouthshire has been commissioned to offer targeted support to young people with emerging mental health concerns. This active monitoring project will be piloted in Monmouth Comprehensive School. In our schools, there are a range of differentiated approaches that range from universal approaches such as advice and support signposting, and that's in PSE lessons, to more targeted interventions for individuals that include increased provision of Elsa support, specific exam anxiety workshops, pupil wellbeing ambassadors in our schools, mental health first aid trained members of staff, targeted mentoring. I hope that members can take assurance from the length of these comments today, this is one area that the administration takes very seriously. Working with officers and of course, our schools, we will continue to develop this offer in the light of emerging needs. And finally, I would, at this point, like to say a huge well-done to all our students who've worked hard in this exam series. The background of the pandemic will no doubt be felt, but I'm sure their hard work will see them through. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Grokot.
Chair.
Yes.
Can I come back for my supplementary pieces?
Of course you can, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you to the Cabinet Member for that substantial response, he's absolutely right, obviously the disproportionate impact the pandemic has had on our children, on their learning, and mental health and their resilience. He's obviously right to point out that there's groups of younger people in secondary school and sixth form who would have been exposed to examinations this year for the first time, with all the stress and anxiety that that generates, both home and in school, and obviously not helped by the Welsh Examination Board setting the wrong examination questions on particular subject areas. I can see that the examination results period in August could be a tipping point for some of our young people. So is the Authority putting any additional support in with other, obviously with other key partners in health and the third sector around those key dates in August for both A-level and GCSEs? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pavia. Of course, every year, officers of this Authority are working hard around the period when the exam results are published. I will talk to senior officers in children and young people and make sure that sufficient and adequate support is made available, and I thank you for raising that point.
Thank you councillor Grokot. Now, I've had an urgent question from councillor Neil, which has, our Cabinet Member councillor Grokot has consented to answer, so please, councillor Neil.
Thank you Chair, it's just a brief one, to councillor Grokot as Cabinet Member for Education. Would it be possible, councillor Grokot, please to arrange for clarification advice to be put onto the website in regard to any student who's sitting GCSE A-level college or university exams, whose travel to the exam may be affected by this week's rail strikes, that clarification on the website might be put there by perhaps Will or other senior officer? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question. I guess it refers probably almost entirely to the railway journey between Abigavenny and Hereford, which I know many young people from Abigavenny do take. I see no difficulty in doing that, anything we can do to reduce the anxiety faced by people doing exams, I'm sure we can all remember exactly what they're going through.
Thank you councillor Grokot. I'm not going to invite any other business, because it's 10 to 6 and people have families to see and things to do, so... That's okay, isn't it? Right. So thank you councillors, very collegiate meeting, and we will meet again on Thursday, the 21st of July. Thank you.